Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, February 1st, 2021, remote meeting on Google Meet, live stream on BevCam. Ms. Kent, could you please call and roll?
Ames? Here. Copeland?
Here.
Feldman? Here. Flaherty?
Here.
Flowers? Here. Houseman?
Here.
Rand? Rotundo?
Here.
And Guanci?
I am here. Councilor Houseman, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. Well done, as usual. Before somebody reminds me, I will read the script for remotely conducted city council meetings, Monday, February 1st, 2021. I have a little note here that says that I should smile. That's from the city clerk. Sometimes I don't smile, I guess. Confirming member access. As a preliminary matter, this is Paul Guanci, president of the Beverly City Council. Before beginning the meeting, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the City of Beverly and livestreamed by BevCam on both Channel 99 and via BevCam's YouTube channel. I'm confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Good?
Yes.
Introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Beverly City Council is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspended the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as adequate alternative public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting does have public participation. We have three public hearings. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other participants or viewers may be able to see and hear you, and anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. You have the option to turn off your video if you're participating via computer. All participants should keep their microphones or phones muted unless recognized by me, the chair, to reduce background noise and feedback. Please wait until the person speaking is finished before speaking, so we can clearly hear all participants. In addition, because of the remote meeting, I'm going to read Rule 22 of the Rules and Regulations of the City Council. Rule 22. All subcommittees of the council shall cause records to be kept of their proceedings. They shall report by ordinance, order, or resolve unless otherwise provided by law. No subcommittee shall act by separate consultation, and no report of as a body shall be received unless agreed and subcommittee actually notified and assembled for the purpose in hand and signed by a majority of the councils of the subcommittee. Every subcommittee to which any subject may be referred shall report thereon as soon as possible after full consideration thereof and a vote thereon. However, if the council may by a majority vote order any matter pending before a subcommittee to be acted upon, the subcommittee at its next meeting and/or to be with forth returned to the council. So, for those of you that are joining us this evening and haven't been here before, that means as opposed to breaking for subcommittee, we take our votes on the floor as a committee of the whole. So what I do need is a roll call vote and six yeses to be able to do that. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Meeting ground rules for public hearings. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will invite the council to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. You may mute yourself or be muted by the meeting host by clicking the microphone mute/unmute icon, pressing the mute button on your telephone, or pressing star 6 on your telephone keypad. Please reserve the chat function for technical difficulties, and if you would like to speak on the public hearing issues, please type your name in and I will recognize you. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. And I must say, Ms. Kent and Ms. Dixon, you've done a great job on minutes the past year. They've been all encompassing. It's nice to find out what actually happened in a meeting. Thank you. All right. Tonight, we have a really good meeting, and I'm going to go a little out of order so we don't have to rush things. We have resolution, we have a public speaker, and then we have some public hearings. So what I'd like to do is go right to Sean Leach of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee, and he wants to talk about the electric school bus. Mr. Leach?
Thank you very much. Thank you to the city council and to everybody for the opportunity to speak about this. My name is Sean Leach. I'm a member of the Clean Energy Advisory Committee and have been for a number of years. I'm also fortunate enough to actively work in the electric vehicle charging industry and the EV industry at large. So the EV school bus is very near and dear to my heart. It's something that I was involved in for a while and was thrilled to know that we were going to be one of the first communities to have one of these vehicles, including getting to go on one of the first rides, which was amazing. I just wanted to sort of touch on the EV school bus itself and why it's so important for Beverly to get on board with this and to address the fact that, yes, we're looking to sign a very long-term lease on this vehicle, but that is not something that should be looked at as a problem or an issue for the city. Just as some background, as I'm sure many of you have already heard at one point or another, the entire industry across all industries are electrifying fast. Fleets, school buses, city buses, everyone's electrifying. They are cheaper to run, they are cheaper to maintain, they are cheaper to fuel, and you are fueling these vehicles with local energy. You are supporting local economies when you operate these vehicles. So it's happening incredibly quickly, and so quickly that it makes my day job that much more difficult because the demand is so great for this infrastructure, but it's a good problem to have. I want to touch on the fact that it's important to not think about this electric school bus as a diesel or gas school bus. A diesel or gas school bus is purchased or leased for a period of time, and it literally sits there and rots for 98% of its existence. It operates a handful of hours a day, it delivers to kids, and then it sits in a lot and does nothing. These electric school buses do not do that. These are parked, these become an asset to the city, to the resiliency of the local grid because the battery in this bus is not just used to move children around, but it's used to make our local grid more resilient. So this bus is performing duties for almost its entire life and was designed to do that. So that's a really, really important thing to remember. These diesel buses just sit and they get less valuable, and these EV buses maintain value and increase value through their whole life. Another important thing to touch on is the supply chain for these buses. Every single person in the supply chain and in the life of this bus wants it to last at least 10 years. You know, Highland Electric, who has put together this incredible opportunity for Beverly, they want this bus to last at least 10 years because they want this to function for us and for them because they are a stakeholder in this with the City of Beverly. They want this to move our kids around and be a local energy asset. They are in this with us. The company that made the bus, Proterra and Thomas, they designed this technology to work in the heaviest duty circumstances. This was designed for transit buses that they're operating in Canada and all over the world that have a much more intense duty cycle than our school buses, and the buses are performing incredibly well. So our school bus, you know, lift is pretty light, technologically speaking. National Grid wants this to work for all 10 years because it is a local grid asset for them, so they also are going to want this to continue to work for 10 years. And last but certainly not least, the people in the supply chain of the battery also want this to last as long as possible because after this battery pack is done in the bus, it's going to live in a house or some other in-situ storage for a period of time, and then when it's gone through that life, the entire battery is going to be pulled apart and recycled because these batteries are incredibly recyclable. These are not cell phone batteries, they're not double A's, they're a very advanced piece of technology. And again, this is not the battery in your phone. This is a huge pack that is managing itself 24 hours a day to make sure it's in peak performance, and it is going to have the longest life possible. So I'm hoping this information will help you understand that this is not only state-of-the-art technology, but it's designed to last as long as possible, and this is a huge opportunity for Beverly to get bleeding-edge technology that everyone's going to be jumping at soon, and we're going to be ahead of everyone because we've already done it, and thankfully, we've put together a package that lets us effectively get state-of-the-art for the price of a normal diesel bus. And unlike a diesel bus, this electric bus is actually going to be an asset for everyone. It's not just a thing that moves kids around. And not only that, Beverly has climate goals, we have energy goals, we need to make these big changes so we get to those goals, and this school bus is going to be a huge part of it. And last but absolutely not least, children should not breathe diesel emissions. Adults should not breathe diesel emissions. We need to be done with that. That is ridiculous that it still happens. So the sooner we can get all these kids riding electric school buses to work, the better for them, for us, for the whole town. So thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it, and have a great night.
Sean, thank you, and your enthusiasm is definitely contagious. Thank you for your passion. And we'll be talking about this when we get to unfinished business, and Mayor Cahill has members of his team to answer any questions from members of the city council. Now, I would like to go and accept our minutes of our meeting from January 19th, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A roll call, please?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Kent. And we are on to our first public hearing scheduled for 7:15 on Order Number 18. Ms. Kent, could you please read that?
Order Number 18, City of Beverly ordered that the city council, the City of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, February 1st, 2021, at 7:15 p.m., remote on Google Meet, live stream on BevCam relative to the petition from National Grid for Plan 29762820 for the intersection of Church, Briscoe, and Essex Street. And this was in the newspaper on January 22nd.
Thank you, Ms. Kent, and I think Michael Byrne is here from National Grid. Mr. Byrne?
Yes, I am.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. The YMCA is renovating their building. They are currently fed from a transformer bank on the far side of Cabot Street. Their need for electricity exceeds what we can supply in the street, so we need to install new conduits from the existing manhole to the building to provide the adequate service for their new load.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
And the work has not been done yet.
Okay. Now, you took away my, you stole my thunder.
Sorry about that.
This is in Ward 2, so why don't we go to Councilor Rand first, if she has any questions? Counselor?
Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that, I guess, what's the difference between connecting from sort of an outside, a structure that you see on the street and running the conduit underground?
Well, the structure that feeds the existing load in the area is also underground. The existing transformers feed somewhere up to perhaps 100 customs. There's just not enough capacity on that bank of transformers to serve the increased load that the YMCA is going to see. So they're going to get their own bank of transformers within the building.
That's excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Houseman?
Yeah. Just to confirm, this work that's being done at the YMCA is for the renovations for the affordable housing changes that will be added to the top floor of the building? Is that correct?
Well, it's going to feed the whole building. Exactly how they've got it divided up, it did come through on our paperwork as the affordable housing portion of the building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other councils have any comments or questions for Mr. Byrne? Would any members of the public like to speak or comment or ask a question on this? Hearing no further questions, I will close our public hearing and ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Anna will call. Ms. Kent?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Ms. Kent, let's move on to our next public hearing, which is scheduled for 7:20 on Order Number 19. Could you read that?
Order Number 19, the City of Beverly ordered that the City of Council of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, February 1st, 2021, at 7:20 p.m., remote on Google Meet, live stream on BevCam relative to the petition from National Grid for Plan Number 29848216 for intersection of Brimble and Dunham Road. And this was in the newspaper on January 22nd.
Thank you. And Mr. Byrne is here for that one also. Michael?
Because of the exceptional growth at the Dunham Ridge Business Park, we no longer have the ability to protect the equipment with standard fuses, which is what we normally use to protect load on side streets. Therefore, we have to put a large electric circuit breaker up on the pole. Due to the size of the equipment, we require it to be put on a pole that's relatively in line with the pole on either side. Because of the existing equipment that's already on Dunham Road and the fact that there are not very many straight portions of Dunham Road, we need a new pole in between two existing poles in order to mount this equipment. The pole we're proposing will be going behind the guardrail, which is behind the sidewalk, so there'll be no excavating of the asphalt.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Ward 5, Councilor Feldman?
Yes, thank you. So there's two poles currently, and you're proposing to put another pole in between the two.
That's correct.
Is that correct? Okay. And it's behind the guardrail, and there's going to be no, but it's not, there's no need to excavate. You said the-
There'll be no need to excavate asphalt. We'll just be going into the dirt banking behind the guardrail.
Got it. I'm all set, yes. Sorry, the kid's running.
That's all right. We all have-
Thank you, Mr. President. This actually is a little bit off the mark, but it's more about the, under Councilor Houseman's warehouse with utility pole. Who would need to be contacted to remove an abandoned pole? We have one on Bridge Street that was hit probably about a month and a half ago, maybe two, and it's still sitting there, but I have had several neighbors in the last several weeks, especially with snow coming, concerned about it dangling there, so I don't know the other person or if there's some way of getting that communication to them. I know we've attempted with a couple of people in the city, so-
In this case, I can take care of it, so could you tell me Bridge Street near what, please?
It's the corner of Bridge and Giles.
All right, I will look at that, and I will let you know, well, if it's bare, we'll remove it. If it's not, I'll let you know who's holding it up.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Look at that. Councilor Rotundo doing constituent service live and in color here on our Zoom meeting, our Google Meet. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from members of the city council? Do any members of the public have a question or comment? Hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close our public hearing and ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. President, I think Councilor Feldman may want to-
Sorry. I have one more.
All good.
I'm sorry. In terms of the equipment that's going on that pole, the new pole, how much bigger is it in size than the equipment that's currently existing? Is it on par with the equipment that exists on either poles on either side of it, or is this a larger unit?
It's a rectangular box about two feet wide and four feet wide, two feet deep, and about three or four feet high. If you'd like to see what the equipment looks like, the first two poles on the way into Dunham Ridge Business Park each have one of those devices on them.
Okay. That's what I wanted to, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on you, Councilor Feldman. Now, we'll close our public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
Second.
Anna roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes. Thank you. We still have about eight minutes to our next public hearing, and it's really too early to call that to order, so why don't we at least start our resolution discussion? I know that we have Jonathan Salt and Kyle Kuyunjian from the Beverly Bike Committee, and I think we're going to hear from Jonathan Salt first. Mr. Salt?
Yes, good evening. The BBC wants to thank Mayor Cahill, Council President Guanci, and the city councils for the opportunity to present a brief overview of the BBC tonight, and more importantly, be part of the presentation of the bicycling infrastructure and safety resolution, and hopefully it's acceptance by the city council. Nearly 10 years ago, the BBC was founded as an ad hoc citizens advocacy group to promote bicycling in all of Beverly, for all in Beverly. They realize, as did many local bicyclists, that Beverly since the late 1800s, and that's not a typo, 1800s, has always been a great city to bicycle, for recreation, to get to work, to go to school, to do errands, to ride to the beach, or just have fun. But that it could be much more accessible and safe, and at its heart was the BBC idea that a bicycle-friendly community can significantly improve the quality of life for all who live in or come into Beverly. Over the years, the BBC and its membership has created and conducted many events, including the mayor's ride, a family-oriented bike ride led by the mayor; the roll and stroll, a summer afternoon closure of Lothrup Street to vehicles to allow people to safely bike, walk, and however roll along the waterfront; late winter socials, a gathering at the Atomic Cafe of local and state bicycling enthusiasts and advocates; historic bike rides, historical bike tours of the city conducted in association with Historic Beverly and the Boy Scouts; and conducted monthly Sunday rides for all cycling abilities. The BBC and its membership has also created, conducted, or participated in many activities, including education and safety focus, provided support to the annual police bike rodeo as part of homecoming, provided support to Hannah School PTA Safe Routes to School Bike Rodeo, conducted a bike rodeo at Beverly High School as part of Earth Month; smart cycling workshop with the mass bike director Galen Mook at the Channel Marker Brewery; how to commute by bike workshops in conjunction with the Beverly Rec Department and the Beverly Bike Shop; outreach. The BBC has presented to and met with community groups such as the Ward 2 Civic Association and the Rileside Civic Association, the Beverly Democratic City Committee, and the Beverly Human Rights Committee. BBC members were very active participants in the Plan Beverly Initiative and its reach-outs for community input. The BBC holds ongoing public monthly meetings with agenda and meeting minutes to review ideas, plans, status, and seek new input, members and volunteers. Throughout, the BBC has had a very good working relationship with the city, collaborating on events and activities, but especially with regard to bicycling infrastructure. The mayor meeting with the BBC on an annual basis to get BBC updates and ask about how to support. The mayor staff, too, has been very supportive. The planning and engineering department seeking the BBC's input on both city and mass road projects, including intersections at Rantoul, Cabot, Beverly-Salem Bridge, at Cabot-Enon-North Beverly, McKay-Bolch, as well as the Bridge Street redesign. The police department has been actively involved with the BBC, including providing its resources in support of the mayor's ride and the roll and stroll. City councils have always been willing to talk to BBC members and offer support and encouragement. In fact, the city council and the BBC work very closely together to successfully have Beverly be the first in Massachusetts to be designated a complete street city in 2015. The Parking and Traffic Commission makes sure to review how a project might impact and accommodate bicycling. Note that the BBC has regularly attended the P, T, and C monthly meetings for the past five years. The BBC member is now on the commission. The BBC is represented on the Beverly-Salem Climate Action Advisory Committee. The BBC is represented in the city-led group periodically reviewing the Hub Mobility Project. So that's the past, so let's talk about last year. Surprisingly, or perhaps due to hard work by the BBC, its members and the city's continued involvement, 2020 was a year of significant accomplishments. In February, the BBC, with the city's active involvement and input, submitted a Bicycle Friendly America Assessment of Beverly to the League of American Bicyclists. In the spring, the BBC, with encouragement and support from Central Cycle Shop, launched a smart cycling campaign via social media. In June, the City of Beverly received the Bicycle Friendly America Bronze Award from the League of American Bicyclists, and that's a remarkable level achievement for a first-time assessment. And that was primarily due to two things. Beverly is a complete street city, and Beverly has a proactive bike advocacy group working in close collaboration with the city. In July, the BBC presented its cycling equity statement to the city council. In the summer, the BBC core team, using the LAB BFA Assessment Feedback with its list of opportunities for bicycling improvement in Beverly, revised its operating business model and defined a two-year action plan towards a BFA Assessment revestment in 2022. In August, per the mayor's office request, the BBC initiated the drafting of the resolution that is being presented to the council tonight. In the fall, the proposed conceptual GIS BBC Bike Infrastructure Map was presented to the city. Based on MAPC's street-by-street input for bike infrastructure, along with BBC members' actual on-the-road surveys and institutional knowledge, it defines 40 miles of bike infrastructure, of which 10 miles is completed. And I just want to say a very special thanks to the city's GIS specialist, Roland Adams, who recently retired for all his hard work to get the map from an idea to a real quantifiable reality. Also of note is that Eileen O'Rourke of the North Shore Transportation Management Authority immediately saw the opportunity to leverage such a map to define preferred bike commuter routes from the city lines or train stations to Beverly's business and retail centers. In November, the BBC submitted its first draft of the resolution to the mayor's office and initiated follow-up with the city council. In December, the final Plan Beverly Master Plan included the GIS BBC Bike Infrastructure Map, along with many references to bicycling's positive impact on a city. As we go forward together with renewed optimism in 2021, the BBC sees the resolution as a formalization of the BBC's already established longtime relationship with the city. To date, a lot has been accomplished in support of bicycling in Beverly. In addition to efforts to date, other ideas include pursuing commuter bike parking, bike share, off-road bike paths, tourism. Now is the right time for us to unite around this resolution and focus our combined bicycling education, design, and funding to improve mobility, reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and improve our overall quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salt. So why don't we do this if everybody agrees with me, or if somebody doesn't, please let me know. Why don't we call to order a 7:30 public hearing, then recess it for 15 minutes so we can stay on topic, and then we'll go back? Are we good with that? All right. Mr. Salt, we'll be right back. At 7:30, we have a public hearing on Order Number 20- At 7:30, we have a public hearing on order number 20. Ms. Ken, could you please read that?
Order number 20 for the city of Beverly, that the city's council of the city of Beverly hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 1st, 2021, at 7:30 p.m. Remote on Google Meet livestream on Beverly, BevCam relative to the transfer of $23,160 from the Airport Enterprise Fund balance to match a grant from Mass DOT. And this was in the Salem News on January 22nd.
All right, I would entertain a motion to recess that public hearing until 7:50.
No move.
Second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausmann?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Matumbo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Salt? Jonathan, do you have anything else to add?
No. No, thank you.
Okay. So also from the Beverly Bike Committee, and I know he's on Beverly-Salem, the Resiliency Committee, Mr. Carl Kuyumjian is here. I'm going to call you Carl, okay?
Okay, I'm going to read the resolution and then entertain any questions that you may have. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to be here to do this. The Beverly Bike Committee is a local group focused on creating a safe and friendly environment for all cyclists through education, awareness, advocacy, and promotion of cycling fun, fitness, and transportation. The BBC is committed to advancing equity in bicycling in our community by being inclusive and diverse in fulfilling our mission. As communities across the U.S. seek to improve the quality of life for their residents, many look to alternative forms of transportation to increase mobility while reducing carbon emissions. The League of American Bicyclists Bicycle Friendly America Program is the recognized benchmark of community progress in enabling safe cycling. The BBC, with support and input from the city, submitted an assessment of Beverly to the Bicycle Friendly America Program in February of 2020. The League provides all assessed communities with benchmark feedback, and a few, less than a third, receive a rated designation. As a first-time applicant, Beverly received the Bronze Level Designation, reflecting the community's progress on complete streets and an active advocacy group working in collaboration with the city. Based upon the League's feedback, the BBC updated its work model and defined a multi-year action plan that seeks to improve the ability for Beverly residents, visitors, and those who work in Beverly to more safely navigate our roadways by bicycle. And the BBC seeks the city's support with respect to promoting safe bicycle transportation in the community, and the city wishes to demonstrate its support. The mayor and the city council, therefore, hereby resolve as follows. Whereas the city has a goal of achieving carbon neutrality by 2050, as noted in the forthcoming Resilient Together Climate Action and Resilience Plan, whereas bicycle transportation contributes to a reduction in carbon emissions, whereas the city has a long history of cycling advocacy and events, whereas bicycle transportation and recreation have a positive environmental health and social impact, whereas enabling increased mobility by bicycle will increase the quality of life and sense of community in the city, whereas the city has an established Complete Streets Plan, whereas BBC has developed a multi-year action plan incorporating infrastructure enhancements, safety education programs, skills training, and core cycling events, whereas the city has received benchmark feedback from, from the BBC on current cycling status and areas for improvement, and whereas the city has included multiple objectives related to enhancing bicycling infrastructure in the Plan Beverly Comprehensive Master Plan of 2020. Now, therefore, be it so resolved by the city of Beverly that, one, the city seeks to promote safe bicycle transportation in the community in order to reduce carbon emissions and improve the quality of life of Beverly residents and visitors. Two, in order to improve the ability to safely travel by bicycle in Beverly, the city will strive to, A, meet annually with the BBC to review progress related to the BBC Action Plan, Complete Streets Implementation, and Status of Bicycling Infrastructure Enhancements in Plan Beverly in consideration of the administration's implementation matrix. B, collaborate as resources permit with the BBC regarding bicycle infrastructure improvements and implement where appropriate bicycle infrastructure improvements as referenced in the conceptual BBC GIS Bike Map in accordance with planned roadway improvements subject to technical, construction, and fiscal realities. And D, pursue state and federal grants and other types of funding that may be available to fund bicycling infrastructure where and when it is in the best interest of the city. Any questions?
Any questions? Somebody has to have a question. Counsel Rand.
This is more of a, well, actually, I do have a question. One is, will you be hosting any community rides this year? And two, I just wanted to, to share a compliment with you. The Beverly Bike Committee, though it's not an official city committee, has always inspired me with your ability to connect with the community and bring people in who maybe aren't avid cyclists, but yes, you, you really do a great job of getting all of us excited about riding bikes and being outside and enjoying the natural beauty of our city. And I also am always impressed that when this group, when the Bike Committee is seeking, they almost always have an eye towards include, they have, you have a filter towards including all ways of going. So knowing that anything, anything our city does to make biking safer, makes pedestrians safer, and makes us in general happier and healthier as a community, and better able to connect, so. So yeah, will you be hosting a ride for us to participate in?
We plan, we plan putting together a schedule of rides for later this year, again acknowledging the constraints of the pandemic. We're also going to start up our socials again. We're going to have guest speakers coming in. Todd Bailiff, who's a local author and a founder of the Beverly Bike Committee, will be the first speaker, talking about his book on Major Taylor. Another comment I'd like to make is that I think Beverly, we really do have a unique opportunity. When you go through the Plan Beverly document, there's approximately 21,000 people who work in Beverly. 3,300 of those live and work in Beverly, and the vast remainder live in adjoining communities. And we should be able to enable people to commute to work by bicycle with all the benefits that that would engender. So what we're focused on is how to put together a comprehensive overview so you have a capability as a community to enable bicycling commute, make it a viable transportation alternative. And I think that's a really good possibility for the city to pursue.
Great.
Counsel. Counsel Copeland.
Yes, thank you, Council President. And welcome, Jonathan and Carl. The, thank you for the work you do for the city and to create constituents of Ward 6, so, you know, rock along. I got a chance to speak with each of them, and I think the work that they're doing is fantastic. But also, I think as we spoke about, the resolution, the passing of the resolution, doesn't mean we're putting any, any specific money or funding up for this right away. It just gives us an opportunity to now focus on some of the objectives that you have in place.
Yeah.
And then we could look towards, you know, what makes sense as far as the money and everything else.
Yeah.
But in order to get to that point and build Beverly up as a great biking community, which is already starting to become, we first need to pass this resolution so that we can put the time, energy, and focus into how we can move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And, you know, and to add a little more depth to that, I think is appropriate. You know, fighting climate change is, means looking at different ways to mitigate greenhouse gas emissions. And two of the largest sources are buildings and transportation. So the, the, the U.S. Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation, there's going to be a lot more funding available for alternative forms of transportation that do not generate greenhouse gases. And those communities that have plans would be better equipped to go after that funding than those communities that do not have plans. And so we're looking at this for the future, saying, how do we be planful so that when an opportunity arises, we can, we can be aggressive in pursuing it?
All right. And so the passing of the resolution will allow us to have the plans in place, then to take advantage of any grants and so forth.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's how we're trying to connect the dots, yes.
Okay, all right, perfect. Again, thank you both for the work that you've been doing. I think, as we can see naturally, Beverly's just becoming more and more of a biking community. It'd be great to be able to support that as well.
In the map that we have, you know, as Jonathan referenced, and that map is also referenced in Plan Beverly, you know, we're a 400-year-old coastal community. So we have infrastructure constraints that a lot of other communities don't have. They have more space to spread out. So we're not looking for perfection, we're looking for progress. So in that plan, we acknowledge that sometimes it's painted on the road, and it won't be protected lanes. In some cases, it may be protected lanes. But we've been really trying to focus in on how do we make progress to make the city more accessible by bicycle?
All right, that was all my questions. Thank you, Jonathan and Carl, and then Counsel President Guanxi.
Thank you, Counsel Copeland. Counsel Flowers.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Well, I will echo the word of thanks to both of you for coming and presenting, and also for your advocacy in the city. I wanted to ask you a question, but I wanted to preface it by saying that Mr. Salt referenced the Beverly Bike Committee's involvement with the number of youth initiatives, including Hannah School's Safe, Safe Routes to School Bike Rodeo. And so I actually just wanted to compliment the Bike Committee on their engagement, not only with adults in our community, but with our young people. I happen to have a Hannah School student who was at the bike rodeo, and I had volunteered and got assigned to the helmet fitting station. And I actually had never fitted bike helmets properly. So I learned a lot from members of the BBC there as well, which, you know, I think then I felt confident to help young people fit their helmets. But I know my own son is a lot safer now on his bike because we know how to fit his helmet properly. So I just wanted to compliment the committee because I think when we're talking about making Beverly a more bike-safe community, and of course pedestrian and all modes, as Counsel Rand said, all modes of going, we want to engage our adult population, but it's also about teaching our children, empowering our children in our community to, to get around in, in ways that are not just in cars. And I think the Bike Committee has operated with an eye towards ways to do that, to empower our children and to make it safer for them. So my question, and this goes a little beyond the resolution, but I wonder if there are, if you all have had thoughts about, or if there are plans in place, or if not. I'd love to be part of a conversation about this. But I know there were some students who were hesitant to come to the bike rodeo and other events like it because they either didn't have a bike at all, or they had outgrown their bike and their family couldn't afford to replace it, and they felt sort of embarrassed to have an old or too small bike. So I'm wondering, do you all already have, and this could be for adults, too. Do you have thoughts about how we could create sort of a community? I feel like a bike share is the wrong term because I know now a bike share kind of means more, you know, you have a system where you come and rent a bike from a centralized location. But I wonder, are there thoughts, do you have thoughts about ways that communities can create access to bikes? And could we be part of that?
Jonathan may want to answer this, he has more experience with it. But in the past, we supported bike drives for the Bike Not Bombs Program. So we, bicycles were put together and taken out of the community. What we've been talking about is how can we have bike drives and redistribute those bikes into community? So we, we've had some initial discussions about that. We haven't put any in-depth plans together yet, but we have had discussions, and we are interested in doing that. Also, in terms of children, we recently got a request from the, the school safety officer to put together something for the middle school because there are a lot of middle school students, including one of my grandchildren, who are riding their bikes a lot and not always safely. So one of our members is currently working with the school safety officer to try to put something together to fill that need.
Great.
And I'd add, I'd add, you mentioned, it's been mentioned already tonight, Sergeant Hennaberry. He is looking for, and will get, obviously, BBC support into a, a grant that he has for a safe, safe bicycle, safe riding, that he wants, an event he wants to do at the middle school sometime later in the spring, I think. So we are reaching out to help, helping kids ride safe, wear their helmets right. I'd never, I always wear my helmet right, I think. But I had to, like you, I had to learn how to have a little, show a little kid how to do it correctly. And learning that comes in handy for all of us. I don't know how many people ride their bikes, but often, once a year, I have to stop someone who's got their helmet on backward. And it's usually an adult, and they've got their helmet on backwards. And I, I stop and say, you know, your helmet's on backwards. So there's lots of opportunities for education with kids. There's lots of opportunities of education with adults. There are a lot of bikes in Beverly, as we know, that aren't being ridden. And if we could get our hands on those and repurpose and redistribute them, we definitely have that in our plans for all ages.
Thank you. Well, I know, I know you're working on it, but if I, I would be really interested in that. So if I can be of assistance or be a community support, please let me know.
You're in.
You're in.
Perfect.
We won't, we're not bashful.
Thank you, Counsel Flowers. Counsel Hausmann.
Yeah, I would just, not to belabor the point, just echo the, the comments of my colleagues and on the council about the terrific work that the Bike Committee has done. I, I know, you know, I've watched and attended many of their, their, their meetings over the years, and they, it's really emblematic, I think, of one of the qualities that makes Beverly so incredibly special. And it's the people in our city who volunteer. We have so many people, whether it's in, you know, the Beverly Bike Committee or other committees, who volunteer for the city and do incredibly effective work. I mean, just look at Sean Leach, who was here earlier, in the Clean Energy Advisory Committee. I, I do have a, so I just, you know, kudos to you, and, and kudos, I know, for me at least, particularly to Jonathan, who I know has attended Parking and Traffic meetings for years now. And so just a quick question, Jonathan, are you or as another member of the committee, presently an official member of Parking and Traffic Commission as a Bike Committee member?
I am a BBC member, and I am officially on the Parking and Traffic Commission. And, but I, but I don't sit there and just advocate for bicycling. I, I advocate or talk about the issues that come before the Parking and Traffic Commission. Recently, just, sorry, sorry, Scott.
No, no, go ahead.
Recently, Carl and, and, and Mike Coughlin were invited into the Parking and Traffic Commission meeting to talk about Bike Committee issues and, 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 and activities. And so they presented for the Bike Committee, and I participated as a commission member, if you will. So that's, and.
Yeah, no, understood. It's just, I mean, the, the level of engagement that the committee has done over the years, and it's demonstrated by this evening's meeting, is, is really terrific. So thank you very much for all the, all the work you do on behalf of the city.
Just one more comment on that. Over the years, sitting on the back bench with the Parking and Traffic Commission, the, the, the focus of that meeting has grown more and more to talk about not just what vehicles are doing, but what, if you will, traffic is doing in, in Beverly, and the impact of a, of a, of a build out of a new building or whatever has on traffic. And they, they're always at, the commission and the commissioner and the participants are always asking the question about, well, how are the, how are people going to walk there? How are they going to ride their bikes there? Where are the bikes going to go? So the, the meet, the Parking and Traffic Commission is, is looking more holistic at the whole issue of traffic these days, and it's.
And, and I, yeah, and I think your work and the work of the rest of the committee, you can take some credit for, for that more holistic approach. So, yeah, thank you. uh, you can take some credit for, for, for that more holistic approach. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Council Ames.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and, um, I agree with all of these, um, comments to date. And Counselor Hausman, I think you have a good point. As someone who, um, works in South Salem, I'm really excited to hear that you have a member on the Resilience Committee because very often I will commute by bike. And, um, so being on the Traffic, Parking and Traffic Committee, there's nothing scarier than that car pulling out or the door opening, um, as you're moving 15, 20 miles an hour down Rantoul Street. Um, and I'm just, I, I personally believe as the counselor for Ward Three that bicycles, um, equal economic independence and freedom for so many people, potentially in the community. I think that's very important. And, um, I'm very happy that you're hopefully going to be thinking about this because I literally work in South Salem and that means either going up or down Highland Avenue, which I have done, or going over one of the bridges through downtown Salem, past the Salem State Traffic and down over and back down Swamp Scott Road. And, um, I'll take my, uh, little commuter, my beater, and, uh, go through it all. But, you know, Vinning Square, the whole nine yards. But it's, uh, it's treacherous. It is not for the faint of heart. And I think that there's, it's, it's phenomenal to hear there's a coordinated effort because I think if you really want people to get out of their car and commute by bike, because for me it's less than a 10-mile ride. So it's doable. It's feasible. It's not a crazy thing. But you have to have the infrastructure to support it or, or it's just not safe. Because I, I can't name many people who would, I know you would Jonathan, but many people who would happily make that, make that trip very often. So thanks for the work you're doing. I'm very happy it's coordinated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Jonathan, did you have something to say? You looked like you were going to say something.
I was. You know, Carl brought this up about how many people commute into Beverly, how many people commute out of Beverly. And frankly, that must mean that a certain number of people commute to Salem or come from Salem into Beverly. So when we were doing, drawing up the preferred commute routes and, which I was doing with Aileen O'Rourke, he'd say, well, how do you get into Beverly from Salem? And we started thinking more about Kernwood Bridge as opposed to the Beverly-Salem Bridge. Uh, but the point was, at all a sudden, you say, geez, I want to show this map to the Bike Committee in Salem and say, what do you guys got in terms of how to get from Salem into Beverly? Because we're showing you once you cross the line, here's a good way to get around Beverly. Here's how you get to Cummings, here you get to Sell Signaling, here's how you get to Cherry Hill, here's how you get to Dunham Ridge, here's how you get to, uh, is it North Shore Crossing? Those are the businesses we're talking, Beverly Hospital. And so you, you start seeing the, the power of like connecting two cities, Beverly and Salem. We do have two bridges. Both of them are okay for biking. I would think for a casual cyclist, Kernwood is better. Uh, but Salem has been putting a lot of paint on the road and, and starting to redefine where their, uh, bike infrastructure is. So all of a sudden, you, you could connect the two cities for, for people that live in Beverly and work in Salem or vice versa. So there's some great opportunities there.
Yeah.
And I imagine that could be part of this resiliency plan too.
Yeah.
Great. Are we all good? Carl, just before we take a vote, I just want to let you know, you made me smile when you mentioned your, your grandson riding his bike. A big fan of everybody up there on Holly Lane. And I did put out a word. I sent your daughter a text and said, make sure you put on channel 99. It's your dad. He's on live.
Uh, thank you.
Hopefully they help.
Before you take a roll call, I really want to thank a couple of people. I especially want to thank Arena Keith and Darlene Nguyen and Stephanie Williamson for helping to put the wording of this together. They did a great job in supporting us.
Great. Thank you all. Um, then I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Kent, a roll call.
An enthusiastic yes.
So great.
Um, yes.
Wommen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Oh, any questions? Please come back when you have new information for us, Jonathan.
We will. We'll be back on a regular basis.
Okay, you've got it.
Take care.
Um, I'd entertain a motion to return back to our 7:30 public hearing on order number 20.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Wommen?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. And I know that we have, uh, Ms. Gloria Bullion from the airport and Mr. Brian Ailes is here also to talk about this order. I think we usually, financial matters, we go to Mr. Ailes first.
Um, sure. I'll just, uh, address the technical aspect of the requests that's before you this evening. Um, we are requesting, um, two things. First is the acceptance of a grant, which you received communication, uh, regarding. Uh, the grant is for the permitting, uh, for the removal and replacement of certain sections of the existing security fence at the airport. There is a match component to that, which brings me to my second, um, request before you this evening. And that is, um, that the council approve a transfer from the enterprise fund balance um, to support that match component. Um, so if you have any specific questions about the project itself, I'm sure Ms. Bullion would be more than happy to, uh, to answer those or I'd be more than happy to answer any, uh, technical, uh, questions about the finances.
Okay. Why don't we hear Ms. Bullion first and then we'll go to the council for questions. Ms. Bullion?
Yes. Goodne- good evening, everyone. Um, so this is, just as Brian had discussed, this is a, um, this was permitting for replacement of the security fence around the airport. It's not the entire fence. It's portions of it. Um, the permitting was involved with Wenham, Danvers and Beverly, with all the conservation commissions. Um, so it was actually a, uh, quite a long process. Um, and then we expect the construction grant to come in, probably in the, uh, April, May timeframe. Um, so this was just some of the consulting fees and, and, and everything that goes with the permitting process for the fence.
Okay. Any questions for either Mr. Ailes or Ms. Bullion? Council Feldman.
Yes, thank you. Um, in terms of, if this was a joint collaboration and project with, um, Danvers and Wenham as well, what is the financial obligation of the other towns? What is Beverly's burden in comparison?
So there is no, yeah, so there is no financial obligation. This is just from the Airport Enterprise, uh, Fund Balance. Um, Danvers and Wenham, since the City of Beverly is the actual sponsor and we reside in the towns of Wenham and Danvers also. Um, but the, any permits or anything related to the actual, uh, permitting process went through those municipalities, but not financial obligations, if that makes sense. So the revenues for the airport, um, in technicality, stay on the airport and then the enterprise fund we use for capital construction projects.
Got it.
Good. Anybody else? Do any members of the public wish to, uh, oh, Council Rand, slow on the gun.
You. Thanks. Um, I just wanted to thank Ms. Bullion. I had a few questions during the week about, mainly, um, I was curious about the capital, capital improvement project plan and if there was enough funding remaining to cover them. And, um, if, if you wanted to talk about that a little bit now, I, I think it's, uh, worth sharing with the rest of the council. But I really appreciated your time this week and I look forward to taking a tour of the airport because I still have not really seen the, I'm, it's not even new anymore, but the, the upgrades that have been done. I'm hoping to do that this month, so.
Sure. Well, excellent. Well, thank you very much for reaching out to me. I'm always willing to and love to share everything about the airport. Um, so you, you'll get an earful when you come. Um, so the, uh, I believe you asked about the enterprise fund and our future construction capital projects. Um, we have some larger projects on our capital improvement program, which have been identified with the Airport Master Plan. And as we undergo the Airport Master Plan and looking at our reconstruction projects, um, we are, larger project will be the, uh, runway reconstruction in, uh, 2024. Um, though right now we are looking at, um, with our matches from, um, Mass DOT as well as the Federal Aviation Administration, uh, we typically have about 5% share if it's, um, a both state and, um, federal grant. And then sometimes with Mass DOT, we have 20% um, to match that grant. Though we have, uh, we do have enough in our Airport Enterprise Fund for, uh, what we are looking at for the five-year, uh, projection for our capital projects.
Good. Thank you, Council Rand. Council Copeland.
Uh, yes, thank you. And, uh, thank you Gloria for, uh, being here to clarify. Uh, just a quick question. So ju- just so I have a better understanding. So as far as the, the airport there, pretty much Beverly owns it, um, profit-wise and so forth, and we're just kind of leasing land or from the surrounding areas?
Um, so we reside in the surrounding areas. The City of Beverly is the sponsor, the Airport Commission, um, through state law is actually in charge, custody, care and control of the airport. And then the town, well, through Danvers and Wenham, Wenham, uh, actually we pay taxes to in lieu of a commission representation. And in Danvers, they actually have two representatives appointed by the mayor, Mayor Cahill. Um, and that is also in lieu of taxes or any other, um, for the land use. Then we have businesses in, uh, Danvers and Wenham. Uh, everything required on, for the businesses in Danvers goes through Danvers, but still gets approved by the City of Beverly. Um, so we have a lot of municipal, municipal coordination with every single project. Um, though it's, the finances go typically through the airport, through the City of Beverly, if that makes sense. And then the land leases all go through the City of Beverly, even if they reside in Danvers, um, the actual property boundary itself. So we have, yeah, with all of our leases on the Danvers side, it gets approved by the City of Beverly.
All right. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Yeah, thank you. Great question and a really good explanation. Thank you. Um, anybody else? And one more time for members of the public? Okay, so hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close our public hearing and ask for a motion to approve the transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yeah.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ailes, and thank you, Ms. Bullion. Uh, we already accepted our minutes, so let's move right down to communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order number 24, dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has been awarded an $85,965 Share Winter Streets and Spaces Program Grant from the Mass DOT. This grant funding will be used for new pedestrian infrastructures, improvements, outdoor dining equipment, including heaters, which all facilitate outdoor activities and promotion of public health with safe mobility. Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53A, require both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gift to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this grant at your upcoming meeting on Monday, February 1st, 2021. Thank you sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. And our Grant Director Catherine Barrett is here. If she'd like to say a few words about.
Uh, yes, thank you, Council President Guansey. Um, this grant is from the Mass Department of Transportation and it is, um, for short-term projects and that are designed to help our downtown businesses during this pandemic. And, um, it's for pedestrian infrastructure improvements, um, some heaters for the restaurants and some other safety measures. And I just want to give credit to Planning Director Darlene Nguyen. This is one of those grants that we applied to and we were declined. And so we regrouped and we decided we were going to apply a second time. And we have a really great success rate on second-time grant approvals, which take a little bit of resilience, but, um, we found out we were awarded, so we were very excited. So if our Planning Director Darlene wants to, to chime in, it'd be good to hear from her as well.
Uh, Ms. Nguyen, you here?
I am.
You are? Great.
Can't see me? Okay. Um, yes. So, um, thank you, Catherine. I appreciate that. Um, yeah, this was, um, it actually even, we actually got denied the second time too, but then we got a phone call saying that they had calculated the score, the program had calculated the scores wrong. So three weeks later, found out that we ultimately did get the grant. So it is, um, quite a relief. Um, and we were really happy to receive this grant. Um, and we're now, the next step is kind of figure out how to implement it. Uh, the original round of the grant was a really quick act, two-week turnaround, two to four-week turnaround, but now thankfully we have until May 31st to implement it. But there's a bit of procurement that's involved first that we need to get done and, and then work with the restaurants to, you know, figure out their plan for returning to outdoor dining and, and get going.
Mr. President, if I could.
Of course, Your Honor.
I, I know that Ms. Barrett and Ms. Nguyen never like to leave anybody out and I want to make sure that our Sustainability Director, Arena Keith, gets a chance to speak because there was some real troubleshooting that the three of you did in figuring out just how to best, uh, take advantage of this grant when we did the reapplication. And Arena, do you want to talk a little bit about the, the temporary bump out in crossings to improve, uh, accessibility, you know, into the downtown from the surrounding neighborhoods?
Sure thing. Hi, everybody. Um, yeah, so I was glad to participate in this grant process too. Um, in my previous position, I was helping to, um, help other municipalities around the state, um, apply for these funds. So it was a really good opportunity to, um, kind of tie in that experience in Beverly. Um, really this grant is not just about businesses and, you know, making sure that people can eat inside in a kind of, or eats, um, in a warm space, I suppose, as the weather turns to protect businesses, but also just about making the streets safer for pedestrians to move around. So glad, got it. Thanks.
Uh, Arena, could you point out where the, I, I know we had a couple along Cabot that we, we identified specifically for bump outs. And if, if it's getting fuzzy because it's been a few months, maybe somebody else can chime in.
Yeah, do you want me to, I can do that. Um, I mean, I think on Cabot, we're still going to, and we were assuming federal and Cabot and maybe, um, Pond and Cabaret, but we were going to look at that with DPS. Um, but then we are also going to implement at least one of the crosswalks in the Mobility Hub Plan over on Park Street, um, in a temporary measure to kind of test out, you know, some of the early recommendations from Mobility Hub. So that could be one or two, uh, additional bump outs. Um, and also flashing beacons, which would be most important on Cabot because we already have the bump outs. Um, but they will be, you know, anticipated on, on each of maybe four crosswalks that we would facilitate. So from the depot, the theory is, you know, we're helping people who might be coming from the train up to Rantoul and onto Cabot. And then in the Cabot, you know, kind of, in the interim is, as we're finishing the Cabot Street work, um, you know, and it's dark. We want people to be able to see people crossing the street, um, better and call attention to the new bump outs that we've done. So that may not, that's not intended to be a permanent measure.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Uh, we have Council Rotundo would like to ask a question or make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's actually more of a comment. It's more of, um, thanking, uh, Darlene Nguyen, the mayor. Um, pretty much the majority of the administration. As a business owner, I'm speaking in behalf of this, the pivoting that they've done, the working with the businesses, um, how greatly we've been affected from, you know, we're talking about the safety of the pedestrians and the diners, um, moving the, um, Jersey berries in front of, um, businesses, um, you know, even with the fact of putting the paving schedule on hold where, you know, this, they're almost pretty much ready to go forward, but they listened and reacted to the businesses. They really did. And I can't thank them enough. Even to the, uh, you know, Martha Lewis, who's on the alcohol board, who helped get the, um, messages out to each business about how it continually changed. Listen, this is constantly changing, um, but I got to give them, um, high accolades. They have been so responsive to us as businesses, um, you know, from the littlest problems to the biggest. Um, I can't thank them enough. I can't be more appreciative as a business owner. You know, from the littlest problems to the biggest, I can't thank them enough. I can't be more appreciative as a business owner. Um, I can speak for a lot of other businesses feel in the same way. I mean, listen, there's a, you know, a few times that they get a little hiccups, but they do respond quickly. So I know it's sometimes the residents get a little frustrated looking at the downtown area, wondering why hasn't the pavement happened? And, you know, in my opinion, they've responded to the businesses to really give us a, a helping hand to really get going through this pandemic. So I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Council Rotundo. Well said. Uh, Council Rand.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing the effect that this grant will have in the downtown and hoping that maybe as part of the process of kind of implementing these bump outs and the Mobility Hub crosswalk, maybe keep me in mind just to communicate that process to me like you usually do, but that way I can just keep constituents informed and that because those little changes can affect people, even if they're positive changes, it's kind of always great to inform people that they're coming. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else have a question or a comment? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Selman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Retondo?
Yes.
And Guansey.
Yes. Order 25.
Order number 25, Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby reappoint, subject to your review and recommendation, the following citizens to serve on the Park and Traffic Commission. Leslie Gould, Executive Director, representing the Greater Beverly Chamber of Commerce, and Darlene Nguyen, Planning Director, representing the City of Beverly Planning Department. Their terms are to be effective from March 1st, 2021 until March 1st, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. Order number 26, please.
Order number 26, Dear Audible City Council, while reviewing our records in preparation for your consideration of my request for authorization to enter into a 10-year lease for a second full-size EV school bus, we have determined that a five-year lease of our first EV school bus was not submitted to City Council last year for your authorization. We presented the details to the school committee in February 2020 and had planned to then submit the request for lease authorization to the City Council when the COVID-19 pandemic hit. And out of necessity, our full attention turned to addressing the public health and safety emergency raised by the pandemic. This lease was then executed during the early months of the pandemic response and the city's abrupt transition to working remotely. It never made it to the City Council as required by law for leases exceeding three years. Having slipped through the normal safeguards and the internal contract approval progress, process, that would have otherwise flagged this issue. Please know that we are taking steps to strengthen these safeguards. Now that we have discovered this oversight, I respectfully, respectfully request your authorization after the fact to remedy this technical deficiency in order to preserve the full term of the lease in our relationship with the vendor at this critical time during our transition to an electrical, electric fleet. Thank you for your consideration and action on this matter. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And I think Mayor Cahill would like to make a comment on this. Mayor Cahill?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, I really just want to say, I'm really sorry about this one. It, as you, as you heard in the letter, I mean, this, this all happened at the same time as we were shutting down and having to catch everything that was coming our way with the, with the pandemic. However, you know, I'm mad at myself because I know anything over three years needs to come to the council for authorization for the mayor to sign. We took a look at, at our processes for getting contracts. You know, every, every contract that comes to me to sign has to be signed off in a number of places. However, there was nothing there about making sure that contract is three years, three years or shorter, contract is more than three years. So we're, we're working on updating our contract review form to add in a couple of sign-offs for the, the appropriate departments, department heads to, to ensure that if it is a contract longer than three years, that it has been before you and it has been, and that authorization vote has taken place. So we'll try to make sure this never happens again. Uh, and, you know, just, you know, I think, and let me just say it again, I have immense amount of respect for the work that you do as counselors and for the difficulties that there can be with having a full-time day job for, for most of you. Maybe having more than one and then being expected to do this work evenings and weekends. So it's really incumbent on, on me and on us in the administration to get you what you need, make sure you have the information you need, and certainly to make sure we cover bases like this. So my hope is that having, going through this now, we'll, we'll get these safeguards in place so it won't ever happen again. In terms of, you know, on, on the merits of the, of the lease proposal, happy to, to answer any questions. And, you know, this is, is something that we caught, as you heard from the letter, in, in doing some, you know, some due diligence on the 10-year. And so I'm glad we did. Happy to talk about, you know, any of the details with you now. Duncan McIntyre, who's with us and is the principal at Highland Electric, uh, you know, I know is a, a great partner on, on this first bus with the five-year lease and will be on the second if we get to reauthorize that as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Cahill. And I think that, uh, you know, mistakes like this are, we, we can overlook due to the circumstances we were all undergoing in February and March last year, that's for sure. Does anybody have any questions for Mayor Cahill on this one? Council Flaherty?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just applaud the mayor for bringing this forward as we move forward, trying to talk about bringing some electrical buses to, uh, to Beverly and to the, the community. We're probably a little behind than we'd like to be, but we're moving in the right direction. So I think that's what we need to focus on. I applaud the mayor for doing that and, and coming forward. Yes, we did make a mistake, but the idea is, uh, the idea that we're moving forward with this is, is, is some good news for the city of Beverly.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Copeland.
All right, yes, thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor as well. Like you said, we, we understand the circumstances that we're facing back then. Even though I was on the council, I still understand. Uh, I was hoping that we can get some, uh, maybe specifics. You said it's a five-year term. Um, I think, I didn't get a chance to go through everything as far as the yearly payment. And I know in the lease, there was a, a bunch of different things as far as pricing, if we, if we go over mileage, if we go over time of uses and so forth. At this point, have we seen any of that kick into effect as far as those additional costs or, or we're still looking at whatever that yearly payment is?
So thank you, Counselor. We took delivery on the bus. I'm, I'm gonna ask for a little help with this. I think we took delivery in late September, early October. It took then a few weeks to get the, the Registry of Motor Vehicles to approve all the paperwork. It's been out doing a regular route, which is the Cove School Route and then middle school and high school from that part of town. And it's largely been on the road. There was a, there was a hiccup with one of the, one of the charging stations, not the bus itself, and, and Duncan and team took steps quickly to rectify that. But let me, let me turn that kind of, and maybe, maybe what we'll do is have kind of the bigger conversation about both buses and both asks that are before you now, because they're really, in, in a lot of ways, the same. The annual payment on the first bus is $24,000. The annual payment on the second, I believe, is 26. There are a lot of details to, you know, to the, the, the makeup of the, of the electric bus and why the maintenance is, is more simple and so forth. So why don't I turn it to a combination of, of Duncan? We've got Dana Krickshank, the, the Transportation Director for the schools here. Catherine Barrett is our grant director, has a lot of familiarity with this. We, just so you know, that all the people that are here that can help you work through the, the questions and issues that, some of which came up at last meeting, we shared some information out in the meantime, but have a lot of people here that can kind of really dig into the details. We've got Mr. Ailes, Ms. Barrett, we got Dana, Mr. Krickshank, Dave Gellino, our purchasing agent, Mike Collins, our DPS Commissioner, Amina Keefe, Sustainability Director. I mentioned Duncan. So Duncan, why don't I turn it to you first, if you don't mind? You, you can, you know the, the details of this best at this point, I think.
Sure, I'm happy to. Can, can everyone hear me? Great. Nice to meet everyone virtually. Really appreciate the opportunity to be part of this evening's meeting. To your question about the fees and charges, there have been no additional fees over the $24,000 sort of per-year purchase, per-year fee, which includes electricity. So think about it as all the fuel for the year. And it includes all repair costs as well. So if a piece of equipment breaks, we're on the hook to replace that piece of equipment. The mileage was set based on the duty cycle of the average school bus in Beverly. And so we, we put the surcharge in the contract in the event that, in the event that it goes over, although we fully expect, and I think Dana can probably speak to this, but we expect that it would, it would never go over in terms of the mileage. Um, and then lastly, to your question about time of use, when you think about an electric school bus versus a, a diesel, we need to plan around three to four hours of charging time per day. And some days it might be a little more, some days a little bit less. But we put operating hours in the contract just so we can plan around blocks of time to charge. There are more guidelines, and when COVID hit, the, the times changed and we said, no problem, we'll just shift our charging to a, a different period of time during the day. So I'll, I'll pause there. Happy to answer any questions. We're a local company and this is the first project of many, and I can tell you that there are more than 25 school districts around the country who have looked at this first project as a model for how to do this. So we, we've very much appreciated the partnership and look forward to continuing that.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. And you're local too. You're a North Shore resident. Your business is up here?
That's correct. I live in Hamilton. The business is based in Hamilton today, although we've outgrown our office space and we're embarking on an effort to move. And we may end up in Beverly. We'll see.
Plenty of great office space here in Beverly. Uh, let's go to Council Ames has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Press, President. I have a couple and a couple of comments. First, I represent, you and I were on the bus together when we took the ride, Mr. McIntyre. I represent the part of Beverly that has the middle and the high school. So I represent the part of Beverly that sees the most diesel fumes from the buses because they are housed in Ward 3, they run through Ward 3. So I, I see this as a great opportunity and I also have had some conversations and truly understand the lengths that you have gone to personally, your company has gone to, to invest in this project. And I understand that this is really, really a world-class, first-in-the-nation kind of project to showcase this technology and to try to bridge the infrastructure costs that are so prohibitive for so many communities to transfer into electric buses. So I, I, I truly want to thank you for the investment that you have made here in Beverly. And I do know that you did take a look at what you estimated to be the cost for diesel annually and tried to match that. So you literally, as a businessperson myself, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate the fact that you reversed engineered this project to get us the technology. That's a big deal. I, and, and I support it truly. One thing, and back to the city side of this. Mr. Mayor, I, I totally get it. I mean, in terms of the first contract and the pandemic and, uh, I mean, there was a lot going on, so much unknown, so much fear. I mean, I completely understand. One thing that would be particularly helpful from your team for me to understand is, what is your big picture? So we are looking at voting for tonight, the five-year lease, the first lease, the 10-year lease, the second lease. But rather than take these as a one-at-a-time kind of understanding, what is your picture for the next 10 years for school buses for the city of Beverly? I think that's the way we all would like to try to take a look at it. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, for, for everything you just said. And it's, it's the best question, really, and, and one that we'd love to engage with you all on in a kind of a lengthy conversation. I'm not sure that you'll want to do that tonight, but, but let me say this. We met late last week internally on that same point. And part of it was, we asked Duncan to come meet with our team and share the way he's looking at it. Because, you know, you, you've heard me say that we're, we're, we did the first one and we're asking you to partner with us in doing the second one in a lease model that doesn't have us owning at the end of the lease, correct? And one of the questions that remains with me is, is that the model we should pursue? Or do we want a lease to own? And, and Duncan was able to share some thoughts on both fronts with us. He also is able to do, give us a little bit of an update on where costs are landing now and trending and where things are hopefully gonna go before two on, you know, the, the, the cost differential is still too great. Duncan and his company applied for and secured grants for each of the first two buses to help bridge that gap. We know that with, with our fleet of 47 vehicles, every couple of few years, we need to order a few more. Dana and I, Dana talked with us the other day about where we are likely to be in terms of needing to order a couple more buses later this spring. Uh, and we don't know about next spring, and we're trying to look carefully at, you know, are we getting everything we can out of each of these buses before we go to the next, the next lease to own, which has been the, the kind of traditional model. And so if, if we could, we would love to never buy another internal combustion engine powered vehicle again in our school fleet. I don't know that we're gonna be able to say that in the spring of 2021. We may still need to buy some, some more. And, you know, we talked about, and Commissioner Collins is, is, is in the meeting too here. We talked about some of the additional measures that were gonna be required of internal combustion engines in the near term because this transition to all EV fleets likely can't happen wholesale right yet. So that, that's kind of a, a little bit of a framing. But why don't Duncan, why don't you give a couple of details along those lines and we'll see if anybody else wants to share more as well?
Sure. Well, first of all, we really appreciate the comments. You know, we, as a company, exist entirely to perpetuate school bus electrification around the country. So this is all we do, so we're very passionate about it. You ask about the big picture over the next decade. We think that in four years or five years, it will be cheaper to replace a diesel bus with an electric bus unsubsidized. And that does not mean that the upfront cost to purchase the bus will be less, but the combination of purchasing and the operating expenses, sort of the total cost of ownership, will, uh, will be less. Today, it is not. As the mayor said, we're seeking, so we've sought subsidies to help, help, you know, pay for these first couple of projects. But even with those subsidies or those incentives, the upfront cost is still considerably higher, more than 2X. And we're, uh, we're covering that extra cost by making a bet on operational savings in the future. So if you think about four years from now, the purchase price of these vehicles will be a lot less. It will still be more than a diesel, but it will be at parity to the taxpayer such that it will, we think it'll be a no-brainer. So our bet is that you will want to continue electrifying your fleet as long as it's neutral or beneficial to the taxpayer. And we hope to be a long-term partner with the city in that effort. And it could be that you want to own some of your own buses and you've got a path to do that, which is great. And we'll be willing to lease buses to you and help with the charging and the operational components that we think are complex and ripe for having an infrastructure partner. So hope that, I hope that's helpful.
I have two last short points. First, I understand part of the deal was that you put in at considerable cost, the charging infrastructure. at considerable cost, the charging infrastructure. That your company did that and that you will get the revenue from the electricity offline from the buses. But that seems reasonable to me. But I just wanted to confirm that piece of it and that's fine. The other thing that I think just in this bigger conversation, and Duncan, you have nothing to, you know, to say concerning this. But I think the point also has to be made about the people driving those buses and how they are compensated. And they're, they can't make a living wage. And most of them make less than $25 an hour. Most of them have no benefits. And I think while I am so supportive of this, this project, I, many of them live in Ward Three. I think that we also need to be cognizant of those individuals that are paras and cafeteria workers and maintenance personnel and bus drivers who care and feed and protect our most precious, precious, the most precious thing we have in this city are, are kids and just long-term think about trying to compensate them somehow a little better, more economic, more, more, you know, more justly. So thank you. And that's all I have to say. But thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ames. Counselor Hausmann?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I want to focus on, on, on two things really. One is in, in economics, there's the concept of externalities, things that are actually a cost, but not actually factored into the price of things. And, you know, one of the externalities of the petroleum-based vehicle fleet we have are the emissions. And so I'm, I'm, I'm happy to see that in the analysis that we asked for regarding, you know, comparables between diesel and electric. I think it's appropriate. And I am glad to see that what's been labeled social cost of CO2, or you might say, I would might say health cost, is factored in because I think that that is an externality that typically is not captured. And I, so I think it's legitimate to factor it into the comparable costs of electric and, and diesel vehicles for, for the city and, you know, that the taxpayers are paying for. But getting back to sort of that, that comparison of costs and sort of the bigger picture that, you know, Counselor Ames and the mayor and Mr. McIntyre sort of were discussing about the big picture down the road. In order for the city to, in order to help the city make the kinds of analysis necessary to figure out that big picture and, and when we can make that complete transition, when we can substitute electric for diesel in any given case or from a bigger picture. The relative costs, like Mr. McIntyre were referring to, some of them are going to be on the, on the, the manufacturer or the provider, that, you know, the, the lessor, Mr. McIntyre's company. But as the city looks at the notion of potentially owning them or even trying to figure out what is a, an appropriate lease term on the cost. This question kind of goes to Mr. McIntyre, but I, but I welcome, you know, anyone else, whether it's Mr. Ailes or the mayor or whoever on the administration side to jump in. What kind of access does the city, will the city have to what you, Mr. McIntyre, might consider a proprietary piece of information around those costs that you are presently going to be taking on within the confines of the lease for, for maintenance and repairs and all those associated running costs? What kind of access or how do you, how do you sort of solve the conundrum of, of providing the city with that, with sufficient information down the road to help the city go through that analysis for itself and still, if it is proprietary, and I would imagine it might be, I mean, I'm in business myself, you know, sort of protecting your proprietary interest. Can you just sort of talk about that piece of it? And then without, without dwelling on it too much, also talk about the, the calculation, how the calculation is reached to assign a value to what's labeled as a social cost or I'd call it a health cost of CO2. And those are my questions.
Sure. So good questions. So in terms of our costs, we don't view the costs independent as very proprietary. We're happy to share them. We paid $324,000 for the first bus. We, we will pay $299,500 for the second bus. There's a lot more detail that we're, we're happy to share. In terms of the risks we take on, we take on the fluctuations in electricity prices because we commit to fuel the bus for 10,000 miles per year. We don't know what the price of electricity will be in three, four, five, seven, eight, nine years. But we can share how much electricity we expect we'll need. And then maintenance costs are maybe the biggest unknown. I think one of the biggest obstacles around this transition is municipalities typically don't want to pay two or three times more in CapEx for the promise that it will be cheaper to operate because they don't know if it will be cheaper to operate. And so we've taken on the approach of reimbursing for repair costs so that that's not a risk that needs to be borne by taxpayers. But we're happy to share on an annual basis what we're paying in repairs. I think the, so the premise of the business is we put up capital and then we make some bets. Some of them are operational cost savings. And then some of them are vehicle-to-grid income streams. And it's a combination of those added values that help us bridge the incremental cost. So we, we're happy to share that, that data with Beverly over time and whether it's with Dana or with, you know, whatever, whatever group the mayor wants to put together. In terms of your second question about the social costs of a unit of CO2, the NOx, the particulate matter, I would actually have to defer back to Mayor, your, your, your team here who came up with that calculation.
Yep. Irene is, Irene is ready to answer that. Thanks.
Yeah, sure. Happy to address that. So the social cost of carbon is really referring to the annual dollar value of those long-term effects of CO2 in our atmosphere. And the figure that we use is just actually referring to the US. So these are the externalities that Counselor Hausmann is referring to, including changes in agricultural productivity due to climate change, human health impacts, property damages from increased flood risk and increased costs for heating and cooling. So you might need more air conditioning in the summertime. So there's a lot that would go into a calculation like this and the most sort of straightforward and simple way to do the calculation is to use the social cost figures that are developed by federal agencies. So during the most recent administration, the, that actually only considered the domestic cost, which was set to about $7 per ton of carbon dioxide emitted. So the previous administration was looking at the global costs of CO2, that's $50 per ton. And we kind of went the more conservative route, but really I think we expect for that true cost to be a lot higher than $7 a ton. So we looked at the estimated tailpipe emissions based on our few, the fuel use of the diesel bus and assumed, I think, 10,000 miles per year. This also does not include the other social costs of other types of pollution. So a diesel bus has, you know, particulate matter and nitrogen oxide. So there's that kind of other costs out there that we haven't incorporated, but this is just giving you a sense of, you know, what that calculation might look like.
But thank you. If you could elaborate, there's obviously a carbon footprint to manufacture either a diesel or a, an electric vehicle or, or a school bus. I assume those carbon-based costs are not included in that calculation. It's based only on emissions. Is that correct?
That's right. Yep. And again, we'd expect for this whole number to be a lot higher, I think. If we were looking at the global costs for emission, not for manufacturing, we're looking at something like over $5,000 per year.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good work.
Thank you, Counselor Hausmann. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, Mr. Mayor, I know we're talking about long-term right now. But going forward, I know that the technology was still kind of figuring out. I know you're trying to figure out whether this model is going to work for us. But these two buses right now, you've committed to purchasing on the budget side of the city. Going forward, if this is something that we will continue going with the model, whether the next two buses, the diesel, let's say, you know, we jump to the next four buses and they're going to be the EV buses. Will the city-side municipal budget continually pay the freight for it or will that start being assumed to the school side? I know you, right now committing it on us, you know, on the, on the city-side budget just because of the unknowns. And it's, it is a, you know, great thing that we're doing, you know, go towards the green aspect. But there's also an economic portion of this that we have to consider as a city.
Thanks, Counselor. So, you know, typically what we see is the cost of school transportation borne in the school budget. And, but we also have been in the practice of leasing to own. And so in talking this over with the school committee, my school committee colleagues a year ago, it, it seemed to be appropriate at that time. And so, you know, I, I offered at that point to carry the $24,000 annual cost on the city side of the budget. Excuse me, we, we've been spending quite a bit of time, Mr. Ailes can, can speak to this if he wants, on trying to identify a modest amount of, of resources on the city side to underwrite kind of a early, early adoption, green initiatives. And so this, this was one of them that we looked to. So we, we looked to the same model for the second bus. But I will say to you that it'll probably stop there. I mean, you know, we, we can all have this conversation. But certainly in terms of, you know, the fact that school transportation costs have been traditionally in the school budget. These two, we're making the commitment that for the five-year lease on the first bus and for the 10-year lease on the second, again, assuming that you folks authorize these, those costs will be borne on the city side. When we do a third one, it's probably more likely to go back to the school side. Because again, that's where the, the cost traditionally have resided. That makes sense?
It does. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo. Counselor Flowers?
Thank you. I'm wondering if it would be possible for anyone, whoever it's most appropriate, but to speak a little bit more about, one of the things that I consider sort of an exciting potential about this fragment of big picture is what Mr. Leach talked about at the beginning of our meeting, which is the impact on our local grid, our local resiliency and potentially what this could mean in terms of the way electric vehicles enhance and add to the grid versus the way a diesel bus, for example, as he was saying, would just sit. You know, in the hours, it's not transporting children, it just sits. So I was really intrigued by that. I wondered if it would be appropriate for anyone just to speak a little bit more about the impact that this can have on our local grid and our resiliency in that way.
So Counselor, I would say that this is in Mr. McIntyre's wheelhouse because this is a significant piece of his business model. So why don't, why don't you take it away, please?
Thank you.
I'm happy to. You know, what your, that your question is sort of at the core of why I left my prior job to write the business plan for Highland. We viewed municipal fleets as ripe for electrification for lots of reasons, but largely health reasons and global warming as well, but largely health reasons. But they're cost prohibitive to convert. And part of the thesis around our company is that if we can very creatively find ways to use the batteries as stationary storage, to help the grid, to help communities with backup power, then there's supplemental income that can be earned. And if that income goes to pay for the bus, then it makes it cheaper for the municipality. And that's exactly what we've done with the first and the second buses. We've put a number in there that we think we might be able to earn around providing grid services. So I'll give you a couple of quick examples. National Grid has to have a certain amount of power and, and they plan that basically hourly for the year. They know in July, when it's hot, everyone's got air conditioning running and you know, that's, that's going to be a time of peak demand. We used to meet peak demand by building more power plants. But today we're building more renewable energy and we're shutting down our, our coal and nuclear-fired plants for the most part. So the problem is in the evenings when the solar power stops producing, but air conditioning loads are still high. And, you know, I noticed two of the earlier sessions were on distribution system upgrades that National Grid has to do. That's a common thread. We have to, we have to upgrade our distribution system constantly to meet growing demand. Well, if our communities have lots of little batteries sprinkled around, they won't need distribution system upgrades as often. And on top of that, Beverly will be able to integrate more solar. If you look in some parts of the country, we've actually overbuilt solar or overbuilt wind. And that results in curtailment where the, the grid operator, let's say it's National Grid, has to call a solar plant and say, stop producing, we can't handle the power. That's bad. We want to avoid that. And now we're not in jeopardy of tripping that type of an event right now. But as our renewable penetration continues to be a part of our mix, batteries are the killer app to integrate more renewables. So we make, we're making a bet as a company that fleets can act as reliable grid resources to help more renewables, backup power for storms and outages. There are 20 or 30 use cases. And on June 1st, we will test that for the first time with National Grid at 502 Cabot Street. And we expect, if everything stays on track, we'll backflow power to the grid to help that evening's solar ramp down. And that will persist through the summer. And our infrastructure design is built to allow us to do that. So I hope that answers the question.
If, if I could add to that, Counselor Flowers, I asked Duncan last week about half buses. So just to give a sense of, of scale, because I know you're thinking probably the way I am. Hey, we may get to a point where every EV car can do some kicking back into the grid. But what, what Duncan explained to me is, you know, the, the, the size of the battery, the power of it, the ability of it really matters. So at present, for his business model, I said, you know, is there, are you interested in half buses? And, and I think he said, Duncan, really not quite yet because the, the capabilities of that battery in terms of, of feeding into the grid may not be what the, well, they aren't what the full buses and they may not be quite enough to, to help underwrite the cost. So you want to just touch on that?
Yeah, that's exactly right. You know, a half bus might have half the battery. So you would think half the value. The challenge is the infrastructure has cost as well. And you have, if you're going to put the infrastructure in to allow this to occur, you need, you need, you need enough to make it worth it. I think half buses in a couple of years, a year or two maybe, could be very ripe. Or we think there's movement in Washington to potentially have more incentives into the sector. So if there's a federal incentive, it could be that all these cat fleet categories are viable and, you know, in or under your budget much sooner.
Thank you very much. Yes, you more than answered my question and I appreciate it. I feel from my perspective, everything we've been talking about is an important piece of this picture, but I think this potential is one of the most exciting potential pieces of what it could mean to electrify our fleet. And as you said, be able to then, you know, have more solar capability because it could be stored more effectively. So I'm very supportive and I'm, I'm excited about this component of it. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Mayor Cahill, you're good with this?
I, I think so. If you folks have no further questions. I, I think so. If you folks have no further questions, I just want to thank you all.
So then I would entertain a motion to, for the council's sake, approve Order Number 26, the five-year electric bus lease authorization.
So, second.
And a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Wanci.
Yes, and Mayor Cale and your team, thank you for being here to answer some questions. And the only other time we authorize things after they've already been done is with National Grid. So don't feel so bad, Your Honor. Great work. Thanks for bringing it forward. Communications from other city offices and boards.
Order Number 28 from the City Clerk. It's for a second-hand junk deal license for Beverly Coin Jewelry Records and Estate Appraisals. And the current license is good. They just moved from 457 Ran Tool Street to 38 Ran Tool Street.
So we need to approve the change of address. Motion?
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Wanci.
Yes. Order Number 29.
Order Number 29. It's from the airport manager for the assignment of an existing lease at Beverly Airport.
Ms. Bullion, do you want to introduce this, please?
You have to unmute.
I'm not on mute?
Oh, no, I apologize. That was me. Thank you. So this is an exist, this is an existing lease. It's an assignment of a previous assignment from a lease in 2009. It was assigned again in 2015. And now it's being requested to be assigned again. The term is a 20-year from the initial start of the lease with four seven-and-a-half-year extensions. And this is through the City of Beverly.
Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Hausman?
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Bullion. Yeah. The, how many more, if, if the lease is extended according to its options for the four, seven years in addition to the initial term, one year would that take this lease out to, do you know roughly?
From the start of it, I, I think it's November 11th. I have to look at the exact date. But it, in full force, if the, if the, the renewal and the extension, the four, the four terms of the extension, it would put it at a total of a 50-year lease.
Okay. And can you describe a little bit about the background or purpose behind the assignment from Godfrey Forest Products to Multi Wing Ventures? And specifically, like, what kind of business Multi Wing Ventures is in? And then I have another question, but why don't you go ahead and answer that one first?
Sure. So this is actually just for the storage of the aircraft as specified in the lease. So just for storage of the aircraft. And I do believe I have Godfrey and/or Multi Wing Ventures on the call as well. We, we need to answer any questions, but it's only for the storage of aircraft.
I see. So it's store, it's aircraft that they use in the, in the ordinary course of their business?
Yes. Yes, that's correct. It's not a large commercial enterprise doing business in a hangar. It's one of our smaller hangars. It fits about three to four aircraft, depending on how it's configured, small aircraft. So it's not one of our larger, large hangars.
Okay. And then my final question is, if you could maybe describe, I'm, I'm interested in what kind of, and I don't know if Mr. Ailes is still on the line, what kind of due diligence either you or the Airport Commission or Mr. Ailes or whoever in the, in the chain of analysis on the economic side, what kind of due diligence you use, was used to look into the, you know, financial viability of Multi Wing Ventures?
So with the assignment, the, the, the payment information in the lease itself requires some middle payment, I believe it's within 30 days. If not, the, so the way that all of our leases are structured, the lease itself, the building itself, at the end of the term, so in this case, at the end of the 20 years and/or if the, the term is exercised, the four additional renewal options. The building itself will revert back to the airport. So all buildings on the airport, how their lease and the structure of the lease, they revert back to the airport ownership. So at that point, we put out an RFP for another lease. An appraisal is done. CPI adjustments, fair market value on the leases. So that's, that's the normal setup with any new lease. And then with this assignment, it's just basically the financial portion of the lease being assigned. We have probably three assignments each year, I would say, at the airport. And, and this one is just a, I would say, a smaller hangar.
I, I apologize. Perhaps my question was not, was, was not clear enough. I'm just interested in what kind of process, for, for any of them, you say sometimes you do three of these a year. What kind of process between the Airport Commission, the Finance Director, you, what is the process for evaluating a, a, someone who's going to accept, who's going to be an assignee on any lease in terms of their own financial viability? Presumably, someone is looking at who this entity is and saying, yes, there are a, they're going to be a solid financial party for this lease to be assigned to. So could you just describe who and what that process is of sort of looking at that? Doesn't have to be complicated. I just.
Sure. Sure. So with, with this one, for example, it's actually, it's not monthly payments. It's annual payments. And we had a commission meeting January 4th. So at that commission meeting, the lease is reviewed, the letter of intent, the business, well, the individuals are present for any type of, any type of questioning. And this goes through the city solicitor, all the members of the Airport Commission for a vote as well. And then any business has to meet our minimum standards, or I should say, lease, leasing has to meet the minimum standards, which set forth all the qualifications for the, the, the actual lease portion itself.
So that would include like a profit and loss statement, net worth statement and just sort of, I, I just, it's not clear how much financial digging is done or whether it's more or less accepted at face value in terms of the, the ongoing vi, financial viability of, of any party?
When it's a business, it's that, that entire portion is, is actually reviewed. But when it's more for just personal use and storage of aircraft, we don't, we don't take financial reports or any type of really financial file or data collection on the background or viability of the company. But for any commercial enterprise, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Hausman. Counsel Feldman is all set. Counselor Rand is all set. Great. Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Bullion? Counsel Copeland?
Yes, thank you. So Gloria, my, my question is, as you're going through the renewals process, and I think Counselor Hausman might have hit on this a little bit. But each time, are you looking at now resetting what that pricing is as far as the lease? Or does it remain, as far as the, the process, every time you renew that lease, are you resetting the pricing on that as well or is it remaining the same from the original lease?
Yes. So in, in a lease assignment, the payment is transferred. But in actual new lease, yes, we, there is an evaluation of the actual portion, the parcel. An appraisal is conducted on all the properties, specifically those parcels. So any new lease, we go through, excuse me, a very formal process. And that has to also be approved by, by the Federal Aviation Administration regulations and standards for leasing airport property. But this one is in acceptance of the existing lease. So we didn't do an appraisal since it's just an assignment of the, the actual lease.
Okay. So, so if the lease existed, say if you, you want the full 50 years, in, in that last year, they'd be paying exactly what they paid the first year?
With, yeah, with CPI adjustments. And then with, yeah, with CPI adjustments. And if, if the FAA found that it was very well below fair market value, we could look at, we could look at putting it at fair market value within that, by the time the lease is up. If the FAA found that it was very, very well below standards. And in this case, it's, it's not. So.
Okay. So for that process, the Beverly Airport itself, when looking to it, be the FAA, that would be?
It would be, yeah. So we would be conducting it with the FAA's regulations in mind of what lease ready, lease setting is, fair market value rates, the appraisal. So it, it's, it's any time before essentially we put out an RFP.
Okay. But just for this purpose, it's just for the leases that carry over. I just wanted to see if the process, you know, 50 years, things change a lot?
Exactly. Yes.
So is there something that would trigger automatically, we'd look into that?
And I will say, this is one of the longest leases I've seen on the airport. It's not typical. So we typically don't have 50-year leases. And actually, the FAA does not like 50-year leases. So this is something that is, is not, it's not typically this term.
Okay. So for the time being, this is a kind of a one-off that we, we have here, but not something that would be standard.
Exactly. Not standard practice.
Okay. That's good. My, my worry was just pricing can exponentially increase.
Exactly.
In that amount of time. And if you're, I mean, it's, I'd love to be able to buy a house for what it was worth 50 years ago.
I know. Exactly.
But it just, you know, fortunately doesn't work that way.
Yes. Yes.
So that's just a concern, making sure we're, we're staying on top of that price-wise. Are we getting a full value out of that that we can?
Yes. And, 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 and thank you for that question. That's it. That is a very good question. And, and the FAA does set that regulation for airports to go through this process so that, you know, something like this is not, like I said, even when I saw it, it was actually kind of shocking because I, I haven't seen this long of a term.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else? Hearing no further questions or comments. Ms. Bullion, thank you for answering everybody's questions and providing with that information. I would entertain a motion to approve the request.
So move.
Second.
And a roll call?
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman? Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Wanci.
Yes. Let's go to unfinished business from a previous meeting. Let's take up the school bus first, Order Number 11. Ms. Kent, you want to refresh us with that?
Do you want me to read the full letter?
How long is it? I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have it in front of me either. Hold on one sec.
That's okay. I think that everybody has read it. And we've already talked about it technically with Mr. McIntyre. Maybe the mayor could make a comment. And then we held this because some councils had some questions. I think that would work. Mayor Cale?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. President. So this, this is the request on the second school bus that, that Mr. McIntyre and his company have secured a, a grant for. And this would be the second one in our fleet. We would take delivery on it. I think the, the hope or the plan is this summer and in time for next, next fall school year. The, the model is a 10-year because I think, I think what's happened is Mr. McIntyre and, and his team have learned some things about, you know, the, the, the need for that longer term as a way to, for them to, to derive the benefits that they need out of the investment. So I'll leave it at that and see if he's, if he wants to elaborate.
I'm happy to. If you think about standard vehicle financing, it's spread out over the years that, over a fixed number of years. And if you go longer, your payment gets smaller. It's the same thing here. You know, we will invest a little over $250,000 in capital between the charging station and the bus. That's after we receive the money back from the grant. And we will earn $260,000 total over the course of 10 years under this lease arrangement, which includes all the fuel and all of the repairs. The, so we will, we will have to spend money to purchase the electricity and pay for the repairs. We expect to spend between the capital and the repairs over $300,000. So in order for the math to work for us as a company, we need to earn some income from National Grid to help them balance the system, as we talked about earlier. So the, the, the concept of a five-year term, we, we certainly, we put that in place for the first project largely because we had a set of constraints that we believed were, five years might be the max, the maximum term that was viable. And so we took the approach of putting the project together, seeking a grant and doing it as a demonstration. But ultimately, we are hoping that we'll end the five-year period and there'll be appetite for another five-year period. So the, the second lease is that full term. The first lease, we hope, will be extended at that point in time. And happy to answer questions, but that's the way we think about it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Questions? Comments? Counsel Feldman?
Yes, thank you. So with this second lease, with this, this is a 10-year lease. Are we looking at, is it a flat, just so I'm understanding this correctly, because you had mentioned the five-year lease part too. Is it a flat $26,000 per year from Beverly throughout the, the lease term for the entire, for the 10 years, for every year? Or is there a, does it change at the five-year increment?
Nope. It's exactly $26,000 every single year for 10 years. No changes.
All good, Counsel Feldman? Okay. Anybody else? Counsel Copeland?
Yes, thank you. And Mr. McIntyre, again, thank you for being here. And it's been very enlightening. And thank you for taking on this project. Like you said, it's a, it's a national leader and other people are looking to us for, for what we might do here. So my, my question is, between the two, I think the, the first one for the five years was listed at $24,000 a year. This one is listed at $26,000 a year. Is that just because of, you know, the change in costs of, of, for everything? Or, you know, if we add on a third one, now we would be hoping at some point that the cost would start to go down. But if we're adding on a third one, are we looking at potentially costs going up at this point? Or how's that work?
It's a good question. The third one would depend on the timing. It would depend on the price of the, purchasing the vehicles at that point in time, that the prices are coming down. It would depend on incentives that are available. We, we, as I said, we expect in three or four years, probably in four years, it will start to become cheaper without any incentives than buying and operating a diesel. And so we think that number should come down. The reason for this price point is not because it's the right amount of money to repay our investment. It's because we're trying to keep it in line with the cost of buying, maintaining and fueling a diesel bus, because that's what's in your transportation budget. And we think that there's a, there's a real chance that both the first and second And we think that there's a, there's a real chance that both the first and second vehicles. Will never, um, fully pay back our investment on them. But what we think is it's a model for the whole industry. And it's worth doing it from that standpoint. And with the second one, we think we've priced it in a place where we, we can, we can recoup our investment. So I would think about the pricing as a function of equipment costs, ongoing, um, commodity costs. Incentives and grid income. And I would say two or three of those four are still unknowns. That we will learn more about over time. Um, but I genuinely hope the number comes down sooner than later. And you're looking at 25 and 24 and 23 in, in future years.
Yes, thank you, and I think I saw with the new administration coming into place, they were, they were looking to focus heavily on electronic vehicles. Um, so, so hopefully that pricing will come down. Um, uh, cause as we mentioned before, it's kind of cost prohibitive, but I, but thank you for working with us and, and. And for trying to get it, you know, lining up the price as best as possible. Um, I really would like to at some point get to a point where we have a full fleet of electronic vehicles. But again, the pricing just has to be there as well. Um, but, but thank you for the work that you've done so far and hopefully we can get to that point and prices start to, to line up right. So thank you and I appreciate it, and, uh, thank you, Counsel.
Thanks for your question.
Thank you both, anybody else? Okay, hearing no further questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve order number 11. The 10-year lease with Highland Electric Transportation for twenty-six thousand dollars per year for an electric school bus.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And order number 11A, the additional information regarding the electric school bus order. Um, I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So, second.
Roll call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Um, okay, now we have order number 279, but before we do order to number 279, invariably, I, uh, meant to hold Counselor. Counselor Hausman's comments on the master plan, I meant to. Hold them and in error, I asked for motion to receive them and place them on file, which was voted on, so I need to ask. For motion to reconsider that vote. So that, um, Counselor Hausman's comments can still be viable?
So moved.
Looking for Counsel, Ms. Kent, no, she's looking at me like I have five heads.
I know.
I get it.
Uh, do you want me to read the letter first, or do you want to add?
The letter, yes.
Okay. So on January 20th, the day after the meeting, um, Counsel Hausman wrote, Dear Ms. Kent. Pursuant to section 2.9 on Article 2 of the city ordinances. This letter submitted as my notice of intent to file a motion at the council's next regular scheduled meeting. For council reconsideration of the council's action last night to receive and place on file order number 16 of 2021. Which was filed with regard to questions and comments concerning the master plan. Due to my absence for health reasons at last night's meeting, I was unable to express my desire to keep it on the council agenda. I wish to keep the order on the council agenda until receipt by the council of Britain, answers and responses from the planning department. To the questions and comments posted on order 16. It is my hope that a productive conversation on the subject will be had, had by the council and the administration thereafter. Please forward a copy of this letter as requested, accept this letter also if required, is the written filing of stand motion to reconsider. Respectfully, Scott Hausman, City Council, Woodford.
Okay, so our vote of consider, reconsideration would be to not receive that and place it on file and have it alive.
So what you're, what, in the minutes, it said you asked to have it held, but then when the motion went. You, you placed it on file, so those kind of same, you know, two different words, so.
So I would entertain a motion to, uh, reverse my decision to receive a place on file and have hold Counselor Hausman's. Uh, letter, I mean, Counselor Hausman's questions and comments.
So moved.
Sounds good, second, Anna Roll Call.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yeah.
Matundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes, so now we are on order number 279, a comprehensive master plan of the city of Beverly. Um, who would like to start the discussion from the administration? Maybe perhaps Ms. Nguyen or Mayor Kangill?
Definitely Ms. Nguyen, thanks, Mr. President.
Okay. You're very. Hello, Ms. Nguyen.
Hello, you can see me, thank you, um, glad that you can actually see me this time. Um, so, as you know, I think a month ago, we presented the master plan to the council and there were some additional questions and comments that. Uh, members wanted to have time to review and additional time to discuss it. Um, so I have, in the meantime, responded to Counselor Copeland with some answers to questions as well as. Responded to Counselor Hausman's memo, which I believe was sent to everybody, so, um. I think with that, it, it was really, I didn't have any more to present, but I did want to be able to entertain additional questions. Or any further clarifications.
Um, Counselor Hausman?
Thank you, uh, Counsel President. Uh, yeah, so a, a, a couple of things, one is when I, uh, filed my motion for reconsideration. Um, uh, it was filed not only because of the sort of ambiguity around. Action taken regarding it, but also I wanted to make sure that we actually, um. Uh, because at that point did not have, I wanted to make sure that we actually had written responses back from Ms. Nguyen and the administration. Regarding the master plan and, and, uh, uh, as, as some of you know, I, I, I had ear surgery. Uh, I have not been completely up to par for the last couple of weeks, uh, but I'm, I am doing better. So I know Ms. Nguyen had some questions that she asked, uh, me if I would follow up on, and I have not had a chance to do that, so I appreciate her pa, her patience. Uh, in waiting for me, you know, to respond to those. Um, I don't really want to take up the council's time to sort of go into the, some of the minutia of, of, of my questions and, uh, the back and forth. But I, I do want to sincerely thank Ms. Nguyen for her, um, you know, for her thorough, um, responses. Uh, to my questions and comments. Um, and I, I guess, uh, I, I think we'll have. Further dialogue as time goes on, when the time comes to, uh, actually consider proposals, uh, for the implementation of some of the. Um, some of the plans that are laid out, uh, in the Plan Beverly master plan. Um, I, you know, I, 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 I welcome the opportunity for further engagement. I, I think I will find myself in a position of professional disagreement, uh, I, I would not, uh, be surprised. Um, but, you know, that's why we're, that's why we're here to have those kinds of, that kind of dialogue and those kinds of questions. So I, I just really want to say sort of two more general comments. And, um, uh, hope that, you know, what I wrote and the answers that we got back from Ms. Nguyen. Uh, you, you know, my, you and my colleagues had a chance to take a look at it and perhaps it's, uh, sort of fueled your, uh. Um, you know, fueled your fires for, uh, you know, further consideration of what, of what's in the master plan. Um, and I do, Mr. President, I, I'm not sure exactly procedurally how to, how to do this, but I do want to have. Um, Ms. Nguyen's answers to order number 16. Attached to that order as, I guess, 16A. So that they are part of the record and the two go, go hand in hand together as part of the record of the city council. But we can deal with that procedural matter, you know, when we're all done talking, I guess. Um, so I just want to say, I just have two general comments. Um, one is that I, I really prefer that the city's budget dependency on new growth, which I've been very clear about, I, I think is the case. Uh, I, I prefer that, that dependency to not unduly compromise. The ability of citizens to have an effective voice in shaping the nature of that development. And, you know, the devil is very much in the details on that. And I, in, in that regard, I have a particular interest and points of view on the divi, design review process. Uh, but it's not my intention to sort of pick that up and, and, and try to have more discussion about it tonight. I'm, I'm happy to have some discussion with Ms. Nguyen, um, you know, offline about that, and when the time comes. Uh, we can have a, you know, m- more discussion if necessary on the, on the council level. Um, the second thing I want to say is that I'm strongly in favor of. Developing our resources to promote equity, uh, particularly around affordable housing. Um, and, uh, I recognize that what we do as a city, or at least it's my point of view, that. What we do as a city is really mitigation. Uh, around, uh, you know, municipal litigation, uh, mitigation around a state and regional problem. It's really a hundred-pound problem and what we can do in Beverly is really a 10-pound solution. You know, we're not going to solve the cities, excuse me, we're not going to solve the states, uh, the, the macro. We're only going to be able to have so much impact on a local level, on a much, on a macro problem. Uh, so we can mitigate it by the action we take, uh, governmentally. But at the end of the day, I, 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 I don't think we're going to be able to by our own action really have. Anything more than a mitigating effect of that on the cost of housing in the greater Boston area. Uh, you know, there are much bigger, uh, I mean, just look at the interest rates right now for, for housing set by the Federal Reserve. I mean, that in of itself is fueling a, a, a very hot real estate market. Uh, what we do in affordable housing is, is, is not going to really address that. It's not going to really address, what we do in Beverly is not going to really address what's going on in Hamilton and Wentzum and, and other cities and towns, which are not as. As favorably disposed to the kinds of affordable housing that we do here. So, um, I just want to say, you know, uh, the, the, the master plan, Plan Beverly calls for. Uh, a number of different, uh, measures in that regard. And I look forward to engaging with the administration when the time comes to, uh, um. You know, to, to, to consider what those are, you know, what those steps are as, as, as they're taken and brought forward, so thank you.
Okay, now Counselor Hausman, your questions and your letter that was addressed to, uh, Ms. Nguyen, the planning director. What would you like to see happen with that? Do you want us to hold it until your answers are gotten?
Well, so Ms. Nguyen, the, Ms. Nguyen. Yeah, Ms. Nguyen submitted on January 22nd, uh, uh, a, a full and thoughtful set of responses. I would like that set of responses incorporated, however we get there procedurally. Uh, as 16A, so they're attached to what, to order 16 that I submitted. And once they are together, so that the answer from the administration is on record, we can then receive and place it on file. But I want, I want the, the responses, uh, incorporated, uh, a- as part of that order, if that makes sense.
Okay, so you want to submit that right now as a late file?
Sure, yeah, if that works, yeah, submit it as a late file. It was, uh, sent to all the city councilors by Ms. Nguyen on January 22nd, I, I, I believe through Ms. Kent, although I'm not certain.
It was through Ms. Kent, no?
No, I, I, I blind copied everybody, but included Ms. Kent. Uh, it was to you, Counsel Hausman, but I blind copied the rest of the city council members.
So Ms. Kent, do you have a copy of it?
Me?
Yes.
I do have a copy of it, yes. But I didn't put it on the agenda because I didn't, I just thought it was her response.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that, that, that's fine, so yes, Mr. President, to your request, uh, yes, that's what I would like to do.
I would like, I would entertain a motion to accept, uh, Ms. Nguyen's responses, response to Counselor Hausman's questions. Um, as a late file and entitle it 16A.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Matundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
Yes, nice work, everybody, thank you. So then I would entertain a motion to receive and place on file together, order number 16 and 16A.
So moved.
Second.
Anna Roll Call, please.
Ames?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Feldman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Hausman?
Yes, thank you.
Rand? Yeah.
Matundo?
Yes.
And Guanci.
And we still have order number 279, a comprehensive master plan of the city of Beverly. Uh, the council can, uh, vote in affirmation for it, we can receive it and place it on file. If we're not comfortable voting on it at all right now, we can do that also. Um, I'm open for discussion if anybody has an idea. I think the administration would like us to vote it in the affirmative. Uh, from talking to the mayor in the, over the past month or so, Counsel Flaherty has a question, or?
Well, I don't know if it's a question or comment, kind of what, um, going along with Counsel Hausman, some of the questions that he had. Uh, and some of the concerns, um, I mean, I think it's a good document, but there are a lot of questions. It means we kind of endorse the whole, um, master plan. I think by, by receiving place on a file, there's this discussion to bring it up later on. Um, and some of the questions that Counsel Hausman had, that's really my recommendation, doesn't mean we're against it. It's just that we can discuss it later and then we can bring it up, uh, at another time.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Copeland?
Yes, thank you, um, and, and thank you, uh, mayor and people of the city for putting together that, that, that comprehensive plan. Um, I think the biggest thing is going to be, uh, like Councilman Hausman was saying, the devil's kind of in the details. So I think really in the, um, the execution and the implementation is where we're really going to be able to have. Uh, see the difference for, for better or for worse as we move forward. I believe there's a lot of great parts of the plan, uh, how things get implemented and executed, that's going to be the true difference, I think, as we go forward. A- and I think that we, as far as I understand, will have a say in that process as we continue to go forward, uh, which is important. Uh, a couple of things that I'd like to see, uh, in the plan or have the plan addressed or be addressed. Uh, one is spaces for teens in Beverly. Uh, there, there really is no space that's carved out, uh, for teens to be, um, without them being. I, I won't say harassed, but, um, you know, you don't want a teenager around five-year-old kids, it just doesn't, uh, work out too well. Um, but also with some of our, our enterprise funds. And, uh, specific budgets, I'd like us to, to be able to drive revenues more there, I think for the parks. Uh, that we have set up, there's other ways, and I'm talking to Bruce Doyd, other ways that we might be able to, to look into. Really driving some more additional revenues into those streams that help ease money off of the budget itself. And we can put that money back into something else. Uh, so I really like us to see some, uh, start to think about some other revenue drivers, uh, that we can start to. Put into that plan or at least address. Because the way we have it set up now, it's really just the, the new, the new building that we're doing is, is really going to drive revenue. And I feel that at some point, we're going to get ourselves in trouble. I- if that's our main proponent and there's nothing else that's, uh, there to buffer that situation. Uh, so those would be my main thoughts as far as whether to receive it or not. I'll leave that up to us as a full council of how we want to proceed in that direction. Um, but I think there's a couple of other things that we might be able to put in to, to strengthen that, that plan as well, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Copeland, Counsel Rand?
Thank you, I appreciate this process very much and I see it as the end of. Um, a really thorough public process of the master plan, the comprehensive plan. Uh, today I, I was thinking about this meeting and this conversation and. Um, I mean, there were, you know, at least. Probably about 10 touchpoints that I personally had with the comprehensive plan. Which, as I've said in past meetings, included recommendations for, um, you know, outreach to the Human Rights Committee. Outreach to the Bike Committee, outreach to the War Two Civic Association, um, and I, I really. I, I felt that, um, my voice was heard in the master plan. Felt that my words' voice was heard in the comprehensive plan. I'm viewing this comprehensive plan as a, as guidance to land use and land policy and, and yes, how we grow as a city. I don't view it as, I don't view an affirmative vote for this comprehensive plan as, as locking me into a mistake in, in a commitment for revenue base, or locking this council into a mistake in, in Bass River rezoning, which, which feels like a risk, I think. And I've heard the mayor, you know, very honestly say that, that's at the top of the list for something coming out of the comprehensive plan. So there's, I feel like, you know, part of me as that ward counselor could say, you know, maybe I'll just receive and place that on hold so I can just say, when the time comes, I can say, yeah, that's, I didn't really like that about the plan, so this was kind of my escape route. And, and I don't feel the need to do that. I, I feel like the comprehensive plan was a public process that thankfully went on longer than we expected so that it could include an equity and justice lens to it. I don't think it's perfect. I don't think it's supposed to be perfect. I think it's supposed to be guidance, and I, I would be happy and proud as a council to support this affirmatively. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Rand. Council Houseman?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I, I want to be clear about, as clear as I, clear as I can, because I frankly feel somewhat conflicted about this, that the master plan and the public process was extremely comprehensive. I think it's a well-written document. I have in writing complimented Ms. Nguyen in the planning department on the work they did on this. And I do think that it is a broad statement of principle. And that a vote in, a vote to endorse it, as Council Rand said, I don't believe holds any counselor to specific provisions that are in the master plan. Because it is a, it's a very broad brush description. Now, it does have certain specific things in it that I, I, I do leave me, me a bit uneasy, or certainly that I think warrant further discussion. My own preference would be to receive it and place it on file for that reason. But I don't think any counselor should necessarily feel any differently than Councilor Rand has expressed, that a decision to, I'm not sure exactly what the, what the word is that the administration's asking for, endorse it, that that would necessarily bind any counselor to a position where the administration or any planning, you know, planning board member could come back and say, but counselor, you voted in favor of the planning, the master plan, and this is what it says, and therefore aren't you contradicting yourself? Or something to that effect, or you, you know, you own it, right? Personally, I would rather avoid having to go there, not have a discussion or be open to, open, open myself up to, to a, to that kind of a discussion where someone could say somehow, I own what's in the master plan. And so it's easier for me to simply receive and place on file for that reason. But I want to be fair, I guess, in saying that I think Councilor Rand's position is also perfectly supportable, and that, you know, if, although I would rather vote, receive and place on file for the reasons I've just stated, I, I don't feel that it would be wrong, in other words, I guess, for, you know, someone like Councilor Rand to take the position that you did. I, I think that's a perfectly legitimate and reasonable position to take, or that any, any of the members of the council could take. So.
Thank you, Council Houseman. Council Matundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to echo sort of what Councilor Rand said. You know, we are voting on a document that had plenty of public input. You know, I've seen most of the council, if not all of you, at one sort of a meeting or another. They've made extra special times to come up to, you know, other area neighborhoods to hear their voices, their concerns and what have you. Listen, the original mass, the master plan back in 93, 94, when it was created, we're still working off of that plan. It's going forward. I don't hear anyone saying, well, you know, the council's back in 93, 94 endorsed this plan and, you know, this document, just because they endorsed it, that's what the problem is. The fact is, is we need some sort of a guideline. You know, if we endorse this plan, if we support the plan, I don't feel as if we're going to be held accountable. Where we'll be held accountable is when, if the mayor or whomever comes forward to the council, if we're still on it, and says, we want to do a overlay district at the Bass River. Well, that's where as councils, we need to do our, you know, due diligence to make sure that we're hearing our constituents and, you know, representing them. We have, there are processes in place where we'll be able to still challenge this document if we don't feel that certain parts of it are, you know, in the best interest of the people we represent. I think this document's been well thought out, it's been well heard out from a good portion of the public. So I just wanted to kind of put my two cents in regards to why I feel that, you know, supporting this document, why it's worthwhile, I feel that there's enough processes in place where we'll be able to challenge it if we find that there's not a, you know, it's not a perfect document, but there is at least an opportunity for us to, you know, have discussions going forward in the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Feldman?
Yes, thank you. I would like to echo many of Councilor Rand's sentiments, and I think we, you know, the master plan has a considerable amount of the transformations in Ward Five. And I, I think that in the process of developing this plan and the amount of input that has been sought out, and in addition to that, you know, a lot of the things that make me pause in endorsing this plan have been worked out by neighborhood meetings with specific areas of development that were cause for concern for my constituents. So I feel like in many ways, giving this plan support of the council, at least from my perspective, is in the good faith that they afforded my constituents and myself, because I wouldn't be able to support this if it wasn't for the fact that they had really addressed the concerns that were in the plan that were from the people that I represent. So I can say that at this point, they have made it, the, the planning department and everyone that worked on the committee have really done such a good job of meeting people where they're at and making the changes to this living document in a lot of ways. I know it's, it's a roadmap, and the willingness they've shown in that regard, the specific concerns, gives me the full confidence to support this because they've earned that, that trust in terms of the process. The utmost faith that that would continue based on what I've seen so far. So I would, I would like to support that. That's my take on the matter.
Thank you, Council Feldman. Council Flowers?
Thank you. I actually, I did not have a sense of how I felt about this question, and I've been listening to the discussion. I guess it's not that I didn't have a sense, I felt like I could have gone either way on whether just to receive and place on file or endorse the plan. But as I've been listening to the conversation, and I still think I could be persuaded either way, but I have been thinking about, in my professional life, the number of plans and strategies and documents and steps forward that are produced effectively by committee. And by that, I just mean with multiple people having input. And that's how I view this master plan. And I was just sitting here thinking that when we do that, in my professional life, we often end up with a final document where it may not have everything that every individual person wanted exactly the way they wanted it, but we come up with something that together we have crafted. And that is how I view this master plan. I think about the, as Council Feldman was just referring to, and Council Matundo and Rand also referenced, the number of neighborhood meetings, the number of participation opportunities for our community. I feel like what we've done is craft together a master plan that took into account people's differing perspectives, feedback, sometimes pushback, and, you know, may not have in it or has differently worded perhaps, components that not, any one individual might be able to point to something, me included, and say, this part, you know, this isn't exactly how I would love to see this done, or not how I would have worded it. But on the whole, I guess I, I'm coming to, as I'm thinking, view endorsing the plan as in part an endorsement of our community, of every person who showed up to a meeting, who participated, who shared their perspective, who shared their vision for our city. And I definitely agree with the perspective of many counselors who have spoken before me, that we have the opportunity, as Council Copeland said, it's when we, it's when it comes to the execution of these pieces of the plan, we'll be guided by it, but we have the opportunity to weigh in and to continue to steer the direction of our community together, reflecting what our constituents' needs and hopes are at those opportunities as well. So I think in listening to the conversation, I've really come around to feeling more convinced that affirmation of the plan would be a powerful statement of the work the community's done together. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Houseman.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This, for me personally, has been one of the most fraught votes because I am quite conflicted, honestly. I was impressed with the amount of people who are really excited about this and came out, came to meetings, gave their opinions, and I was sort of, and I think many of the ideas in it are, are wonderful, but I feel like it is a document of ideas. It is not a document to the, at this point, as a document of plans. And at the same, and, you know, my, my concerns are, I feel like us as a council and the planning board and the, and the, the structures that, that are in place in this city maybe did not have as much of a formal place at the table as perhaps I would like. But I'm a counselor, I'm not in charge of putting together a master plan, so I accept, you know, what has been brought before us. So as I would like to have seen, a more robust discussion of commerce, and maybe I can appreciate what's here. And I would struggle to endorse this in terms of, if the endorsement meant that I endorsed the plan as a plan to move forward, I could, I endorse the effort, I endorse the ideas that were presented, but I think that this is a beginning, this is a starting step. And I would be loathe to have this used as something that the council and the mayor put forward, and then this is where we must go from here. Because I do not, while I embrace how much went into it and appreciate that, I do not believe that it is at a point where much of it is ready to plug and play. So, and maybe we can speak to that a bit, because I, I don't necessarily have an answer, but that is sort of how I feel about it. But, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Nguyen, the administration, I appreciate beyond belief the hours and the innovative way that you put this together through, you know, pre and, you know, during COVID, because you really did a lot of work to make this, to reach out to people. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Flowers?
Thank you. I just, I've been sitting here also just pondering, and a quote came to me that I've been thinking about, and I'm probably going to paraphrase it slightly incorrectly, I think, but it's a Henry David Thoreau quote, and I think it's something to the effect of, if you, if you built your castles in the sky, your work doesn't need to be lost, you put your foundations under them. And I guess I, I think, to me, a master plan like this is exactly that. It's, it represents for me where we want to go, the ideals or the ideas that we're striving for to guide our decisions as a city. But it, it can't, it isn't, and probably couldn't possibly include every piece of how we would build the foundations for the next 20 or 30 years, because we're going to be evolving into that as we go and be guided by the plan. But I think the, the work, and I think what we're all talking about, I think what we were all saying, maybe slightly different ways, is that the work that we are going to now do together is the work of putting the foundations underneath this master plan, underneath the sort of castles in the sky that we've collectively built, that our community has built. And so I think that, that is where my level of comfort comes with endorsing the plan, which is to say that it's, it's not the mechanism that is to explain every single step along the way, how every piece of it will come to, to be. It's not, it's not, it's not the instruction manual so much as it is the roadmap, I suppose. And so I just, I, if that quote is helpful to anybody else, it's been helpful to me as I've been sitting here pondering. So thank you, President Quansey, for letting me share that.
Thank you, Council Flaherty.
Um, yes, I guess before I did this, a discussion of, I could have gone either way, but I think some of the councils have convinced me to, to actually go to receive a place on file, to do that. Because I don't, I didn't, this is not, it was not a formal document coming before us. They have worked very hard on it. It's not whether they didn't work hard on it or not. We did not get this formally. I just haven't gone to most of them, to these meetings. It was a collection of ideas. It wasn't a back and forth. It was a consultant telling us of the, here are the things we want to do in the City of Beverly. Again, endorsing it or not endorsing it, I'm not going to lose sleep over that. I just think receiving it and place it on file is the right way to do it, and that's what they did back in 2000. They did not, the city council did not endorse this. It was receive and place on file back in 2002 or 2000 when they did that. Again, I don't, I'm not, I'm not going to lose sleep over it, but I think it's the right way to go. And we can, it can be a working document instead of going back and endorsing, because I personally, you know, we were not formally involved, involved in this. We were, you know, there were a few councils that were at some of these meetings, but as a whole, we were not all there. And I just think it's, the mayor did a great job, and Darlene did a good job trying to get this document, especially during COVID, to where we are now. I just feel more comfortable receiving it and place it on file, so it can be a working document.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. I'm going to go to Council Houseman then, after hearing everybody speak. I, I have a motion that I would like to make or entertain. So I'll go to Council Houseman quick, I hope.
Yeah. Oh, I just did a mind blank. I hate that when that happens. Yeah, I, I, in my, in what I wrote, okay, I, I, I want to be really clear. I mean, I said, you know, disagreements about certain things in the plan should not distract, detract from the commendable effort that's evident in the quality of the work. And I really believe that, and I, and, and I, you know, I, I think, I, I was really pleased and pleased with the responses I got from Ms., from Ms. Nguyen, whether, you know, I agree on, you know, quibble around some of the details or not. I guess what, what I'm interested in is asking the mayor a direct question, which is, what is endorsement by the council, which is what you're requesting? is, what does endorsement by the council, which is what you're requesting, mean to you? Does it mean that you are wanting the council to agree with everything that's in the plan, or are you wanting the council to endorse the process as having been a, a, a robust, full of, you know, a, a lot of, you know, great participatory outreach? What, what does, what does endorsement mean to you, Mayor Cahill, in your request?
Mayor Cahill?
Yeah, thank you, everybody. I would say endorsement, to my thinking, is embracing the, kind of the overall values, kind of the basics of the plan, I mean, it, it doesn't mean that, that this body is embracing and endorsing every single recommendation, but that the body, that the city council views the, the process undertaken, the investment made by the community as a whole, and the, the basic, as I said, basic value, values expressed in the plan on ballots. So, you know, it, it's a, it's not a, it's not a, it, it might feel a little fuzzy to you at that point, right? And, you know, I mean, it, it seemed like a good idea at the time, to say, you know, by law, the planning board needs to approve this plan, the council doesn't have a formal requirement of any particular action, but since, you know, most, if not all of you had involvement, and some had lots of involvement, and, and we all worked, we worked together to, to try to ensure that there was as much participation and as much involvement and impact in, in shaping those values expressed in the plan as we could get out of the community. And, you know, and in fact, the number of community members who did have a, a part in it, and have a, kind of have their fingerprints on the plan, I think is, is, and you, you've heard this expressed, and I, and I, and I know it's true, is more robust and more extensive than most communities are able to, to put into a plan. So, that, you know, that was really the goal in coming to you folks, was to say, you know, if, if you're comfortable, then endorse the plan for its, its totality, and, and the shared values and the shared commitment to try to put that, put that roadmap together for our next 10 years, which, which by, by kind of definition of, of that, that effort, and your, you know, endorsement of it, means that no one person, I mean, look, I, I probably wouldn't, wouldn't agree with every single recommendation, I don't think anyone really, you know, really, at the end of the day, when you have a, when you have a process that involves so many people, and you have, you have a, such a broad array of, of areas of, of focus and recommendations that come from, you know, every, everyone here, probably everyone who had a, had a part in, in the shaping of the plan, is going to say, well, I don't agree with everything in there, but, you know, the question becomes, do you have a comfort level with, in embracing, with endorsing the totality of it? And, and saying, yeah, this is, this is a roadmap we can work with, this is a tool that we believe has validity, in that it was, you know, it's been the result of, of so much of the community's best efforts.
If I may, if the council endorses, can, should, should the council expect that in, in the newspaper, the, there'll be an article saying, hey, the, the council is thrilled and signed off on this master plan, full steam ahead? Because if it did, if that did happen, I wouldn't feel like it fully reflected the full breadth of the dialogue. I mean, frankly, I, I'm inclined to say, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with endorsing it, because, you know, there, listen, it's, it's an excellent effort, there are things about it I disagree with, there are things about the participatory process I really had a problem with, and, and, and that's, that's the stumbling block, because I think it's an excellent document, and I think it's a full, it reflects a, a full-throated, robust, public participation effort. But i- if I read in the paper that, that I, as a city council, endorsed the plan, I, that, that just leaves me a little uncomfortable, so it's really, like, what, you know, what, what do we mean, what do we mean by that? So, I agree with Councilor Rand, I, I mean, there was a lot of participation in this, you know, and there was a lot of outreach, and I think that was extremely well done. I also know from having sat on the master plan steering committee for the current plan, well, the, the, the plan before this one, right, from 2000, 2001, that there were city councilors who sat on that, who sat on that steering committee and participated as part of the process, which did not occur here, there were no city councilors on it, there wasn't even one, I don't believe. So, so, I, I, I guess I, I would, I would ask you, Mayor Cahill, that, to the degree of press releases put out in this, and the council were to endorse it, which frankly, I would be willing to do with a certain understanding, that, you know, that there is sufficient qualification about what that means, I guess, because it is a very broad-brush document, it does have some specifics in it, and then some of those really caught my attention, and some of those I have some concerns about, which is my only hesitation in saying, hey, I, you know, I'm, I'm willing to sign off on, on the, the broader picture of, of, of what is there. So, I, I don't know if that helps anyone, or, or you, Mayor Cahill, but if you want to respond to that, I, I'd be certainly interested in what you might say.
Now, I, look, I appreciate your, your thinking, I, I'd say this, this is a really heartfelt discussion, and I appreciate that, there, there's clearly, you know, a lot of, a, a lot of, we're all here for the right reasons, and everybody's doing their job to the best of their abilities, and that, that's, you know, that's what, everything that comes before you folks, including this, so, you know, I mean, you know, you're, you know, you are the legislative body of the city, you, I, I understand that you've got a couple of trains of thought here, so, you know, I appreciate it and respect it.
Yeah, I would just say, as you pointed out, Mayor Cahill, Cahill, that statutorily, the city council has absolutely no role in this process, it's a planning board process, it's a planning board vote, and there's nothing about the city council's role here that is other than perhaps, I, I don't want to call it a courtesy, but, you know, and I appreciate you coming to the council and, and, and talking with us about it, that's, that's important. But, but formally, the council has no, no, no formal role or technical role in this at all.
Thank you, Council Houseman. Council Flaherty.
And that, and that's honestly why I, I think we should receive it in place on file, it's no reflection on how hard the mayor and his team worked, or that we endorsed most of this plan, we were not formally involved in this, and that's no knock on the mayor, that's just the way, some councils were involved, it was, again, it's no knock on the administration, it's just that, you know, if I'm not here next year as a city councilor, you know, I don't want other city councilors, or, or even the mayor might not be here in a few years, saying, oh, the city and council and the mayor, they endorse us together, that's not necessarily the case, that's not our role as, as it's set up, even Darlene had mentioned that, you know, it went through the planning board, it went through the right procedures. By receiving a place on file, believe me, we've replaced things, receiving place on file that are probably far more important than even this, I just think it's the right way to go procedurally, and it's no knock on the administration, on, on the direction that I feel comfortable with.
Council Flaherty, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to receive on place and file.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, or right to a roll call? I think we've discussed, Mayor Cahill.
Mr. President, I, I'd say two things, one, I, I don't really want to be putting something before you that causes a, a split vote unnecessarily, because I think that, you know, as I said, there, there, there are a couple of trains of thought on how to deal with this, but I think there's, and I really appreciate what's been said, I think there is a respect for the process that was undertaken, and the good efforts of a lot of people, really, everybody in this screen, and, and then, you know, many more people in our community than most communities get to participate meaningfully in this kind of a process. And, you know, at the, at the end of all of this, we do have, we do have a tool, we have a, a document, we have values expressed and desires expressed, and we're going to work with it together for, you know, however long we're in these official elected roles, and, and then, you know, beyond that, for, for some of us, I'm sure. So, you know, I, I don't want to put you in a position of having to vote yes or no against a colleague's motion, I am perfectly comfortable with the thought of you receiving it and placing it on file, you know, particularly since, you know, you've all expressed very articulately, you know, the value you place in it, and, and the, the responsibilities you have as the elected city council, to, you know, to have a part in the implementation of, of a lot of this, some of which, you know, I mean, you, you look back historically, some of the things in a master plan happen, some don't, you know, we'll, we'll, there'll be some of these things that are easy to agree on, and others that, you know, that, that may not be, you know, that may not be things that we agree on unanimously, they, they may have the support the past, they may not, but we'll work through all that as we go. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not really that interested in, in putting you in a position where you're not able to, you know, to take a, a vote or, you know, an action that you're all comfortable with. So, just, if, if that's helpful at any, you know, at this point, thanks.
Anyone else? We have, we have a motion, we have it seconded, Ms. Kent, you have a roll call on receiving place on file, the master plan.
Amy?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi?
Yes. Reports from committees.
Order number 22, a communication from the mayor for appointment for Ms. Jan Pierce at One Neptune Court to serve on the Veterans Advisory Committee.
I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So moved. Second.
On a roll call?
Amy?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Yes. Is that all we have on our agenda this evening, Ms. Kent?
Yes, Stacy had asked if she could say something, Councila, uh, Council Amy, sorry.
Councilor Ames.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think for myself and the mayor, the past couple of months, trying to support the residents over in my ward in North Beverly, have been unbelievably trying and, and, and difficult, and I just want to say, you gotta be grateful where, where it comes, and I cannot thank my fellow councilors at large enough, because I think together with the mayor, we've been able to push forward a resolution where these residents are all going to sit at the table with the DEP and Varian, and figure out what comes forward for our community. And, you know, we're a body of nine, but the three of you really stood by those Ward Three neighbors of mine strongly, and I, I can't thank you enough, you know, and they can't thank you enough either, so thank you.
Well, Councilor Ames, it's so great that you had Jan Schlipman involved, volunteering his time with the group, because he was instrumental in getting the city and National Grid and all kinds of different organizations, including the city council back then, with DEP to get the fly ash removed from Wenham Lake and buried up underneath the soccer fields. It's nice that you had that dynamic presence to help you, because it definitely helped that situation we had in North Beverly 20 years ago.
Thank you, thank you, President Guanxi, and, and also, I cannot, beyond the mayor and, and the three of you, also, former councilors, David Lang and Scott Delay, just, and, and they all came, they all came to me, they all volunteered, and it's a great group of residents over there who, who I think will be very effective at efficiently working through this. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, all of you.
Thank you, Councilor Ames. Councilor Rand?
Thank you. Actually, I defer to Councilor Copeland, and maybe if he's not going to cover what I was going to say, then come, can you come back to me?
Sure. Councilor Copeland?
Thanks.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't think I'm covering the same thing, but I just had a quick question, from my understanding, as far as when it comes to the, the Waste Management Committee, and, and some of their objectives, talking about pay as you throw, is that something that's going to come back to us to decide on?
It may come out as a recommendation, but that, something like that would come from the mayor's office, Councilor Copeland.
Okay, and, and would that be something that, that would come from the mayor, but he would bring to us, and then we would?
He would bring, he voted in as part of the sanitation contract, but to do that, it would have to come before us first.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilor Rand?
Thank you. Thanks. So, first, I just wanted to say, I really appreciated that complete discussion, and I, I love that our council can come out on the other side of that with a unanimous vote, even with differing opinions, so, thanks for all that work. And then I also wanted to just announce that it's Black History Month, and I want to remind everyone to celebrate and to learn something new, and have fun with that, bring joy to what you're learning, and share it with me and your constituents and our community. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Rand, and I just want to, this would have been part of my motion if receiving place on file wasn't going to fly, but I just wanted to say that I think on behalf of the city council, we want to acknowledge and praise the efforts of the Master Plan Committee, and all the residents that participated in the Plan Beverly process. Even though we received it in place on file, we really appreciate you going out there, there were hundreds of people that got involved, and I know there were councils at the meetings, it was as robust, if not more, than it was 20 years ago. And I think that myself and only Councilor Flaherty were around back then, but it's just amazing the technology that's changed in two decades, and the information you're able to get over the internet on the computer as opposed to a 12-foot, 12-inch stick pile of paper, a lot more eco-friendly also. So, our next meeting will be Tuesday, the 16th, because Monday is the holiday, correct, Ms. Kent?
Correct.
All right, I would thank everybody for being here, thank you, especially to Duncan McIntyre, who really convinced us that electric school buses are the way to go.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, he's not still here, is he?
Yes.
I was allowed to leave.
Yeah, you gotta get a life. Appreciate it, and you know where it's always nice is, it's always to see, it's always great to see different faces here in our Zoom meetings, so thank you. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Roll call?
Amy?
Yes.
Copeland?
Yes.
Bellman?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Houseman?
Yes.
Rand?
Yes.
Rotundo?
Yes.
And Guanxi.
Before I say yes, I want to share something with you, it made me laugh, I chair the economic, the ECDC committee, and our diehard member is Neil and Douglas, and we really followed his lead, and we had a meeting last week that ran along, and I said, okay, we're going to wrap it up, I'm going to ask for a, a motion to adjourn, and he didn't want to adjourn. I said, Neil, in all the years I've been doing this, nobody's ever said no to adjournment, and you're the first person, but just publicly thank his efforts, and you'll see a document coming from ECDC real soon. Thank you, everybody. coming from ECDC real soon. Thank you, everybody.
President.
Yes.
Guanxi, that just reminds me of Ms. Nguyen and I exchanging emails about the master plan at 9:30 on a Saturday night. I just, you know.
You have to have the last word all the time.
Really appreciate it.
I just say, good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.